Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the Committee of the Whole Meeting, Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. Just a reminder that this is a Committee of the Whole Meeting and no decisions will be made here today. There will only be recommendations that will go to our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, consideration. A couple reminders for today's meeting. Members of the media may sit in the upper balcony at the reserved media table. All other guests, please take a seat in the front floor gallery. And if that is full, there is an overflow seating on the second floor in the Victoria Room where you will be able to see and hear the meeting. We live stream the meeting on our YouTube channel and the recording is available after the meeting. This meeting is also broadcasted on the Broadcast Live on your YouTube, Kojiko subscriber channel 10, HD channel 700, and rebroadcasted on Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. and on Saturday at noon. Because meetings are accessible to the public in all these ways, video or audio recording by members of the public is not permitted in council chambers. This is to ensure that all attendees and those who come to make deputations feel at ease. Thank you for your cooperation. And I also want to mention that Councillor Warren and Councillor Yeo is on the Zoom today. Thank you. I'd like to start off today with a verbal update on behalf of the Emergency Operations Centre regarding the ice storm incident. And I'd like to start off with CEO Ron Taylor. Go ahead, Ron.
Deputy Mayor McDonald, thank you for that. And to Mayor Elmsley, council and guests, it is timely, I think, with this meeting to be able to provide you and through you, more importantly, to the public on our response and what we're looking to in the future with respect to the ice storm incident, the overall event that took place March 29th, March 30th. As you can appreciate and know, we're a week and a half into that response phase and also recovery. So I wanted to provide some updates to you. I'm doing this through or for and on behalf of our Emergency Operations Centre, which is a legislated group. It's made up of a control group of all city representation, whether it's operations, emergency services, or administration, as well as many of our local partners, agencies, organizations. And it always comes together for incidents and events like this and depending on the nature of it. And in this case, all have come together in very short order. So as of today, we still do remain in a state of emergency. And although in parts of the city it may feel different, we need to stay focused and stay within that sort of state of response. We had just received reports very recently, as of late last night, that a significant majority of the community was finally back on power. But that's not to assure. That's to say, we still have a lot of work to do even for power restoration. Hydro is out there 24/7. All of our forces are out there to support it, get ahead of it, and to support vulnerable residents and citizens throughout this week and a half. And our work's not done. Again, as I said, a significant amount of power just came on to about half of the north of the city. There are still many areas, and there's no rhyme or reasons to the maps, where there are local outages, poles and hydro equipment are down, and that's still causing or continuing outages in pockets throughout the entire city. And so I want to assure you on behalf of our emergency operation group, that we are solely right now focused on that emergency response and supporting all of those people. Just to walk you through very generally, this event, so we were tracking this weather event on Friday, March 28th, seems like a lifetime away. We were tracking that there was a storm freezing rain that was targeted over the weekend, Saturday, March 29th. And Sunday, March 30th, is when that storm started and continued throughout over the weekend. The municipality declared a significant weather event on the Saturday, recognizing that this was citywide, that it was stretching our resources, and that it was not your typical response. It also, we were seeing very quickly, you know, down debris from trees. There were power outages that were being reported starting on the Saturday, and again, well into the Sunday as well. So on the Sunday, I mentioned the storm continued. We were getting exponential reports of downed trees, essentially power outages in vast areas of the city. The city activated our Emergency Operations Centre that morning on Sunday, March 30th, again, to bring together the extended services and agencies that would be managing this event. And we haven't stopped. So that emergency group started on March 30th. They meet, we meet every day. For the first seven or eight days of the incident, we were meeting twice a day. The goal was to bring information, work with hydro, stage resources properly, and get communications out as best we could and collectively throughout the community through all of those agencies. It really was not until late Sunday and into Monday morning where we were starting to get better, reliable reports, mainly from hydro, that the power outage was essentially completely citywide and obviously well beyond our boundaries. I'm not even aware of some that dodged it at all. So there was that. We were also hearing that because of that, and also specific damage, a lot of telecommunications in our community, but also to our neighbors, to the north and east and west, were having Wi-Fi outages, cell outages. So communications were very spotty, strained over that end of the weekend and the early part of last week. Our focus was solely on emergency response, making sure that our operations, that our 911, that our communications were all stable. We were tapping into a lot of backup and secondary plans, technology, and power sources to keep the lights on in certain critical infrastructure, water, wastewater, for example, our fire stations, a lot of our other emergency stations, et cetera. And that went on for a few days in the early part of last week. At the same time, we were also, because of that weather event, we were in flood outlook mode. And I won't go through the definitions and the differences, but essentially recognizing that there was heavy precipitation, we were monitoring sort of flooding that is pretty regular in the north half of our city, but it is also sort of throughout. And depending on circumstances and weather, we will often activate from an emergency standpoint, even just managing floods. That same day on Monday, once we realized the scope and scale of this event, the mayor declared a state of emergency. That was to formalize things and essentially to communicate out to the public of the scope and scale of this event. We still remain in a state of emergency today, and I'll talk sort of through the details on that. So Monday was quite a busy day, where all facilities were essentially closed, the vast majority of the city had power outages. We were in emergency response mode, as I mentioned, schools were closed, et cetera. For the remainder of the week, essentially Tuesday, April 1st, and right up through to last weekend, so April 6th, as you can appreciate, we were all out, all resources, spread out over the 3,000-plus square kilometers of geography. It's almost like managing a provincial incident if you look at sort of how our infrastructure is built. I mean, there's just so much geography, there's so many different infrastructure pieces that we're relying on in different parts of the city. And certainly, the north half of the city in particular, in terms of bringing back hydro, and I'm saying deliberately the north half, really wasn't coming online until the weekend that just passed. So many were out of power for more than a week. That's not to say that it wasn't just as impactful in other rural areas, some of the remote areas. And shockingly and surprisingly, even in our urban areas, we had localized neighborhoods, pockets, areas that power was just restored on the weekend. So similarly, a seven to 10-day outage for those residents as well. Flood warnings were starting to come out, so we're escalating sort of that review, again, mainly focused on the north half of the city. Gradual restoration of facilities, things coming online, being able to use backup generation, et cetera, over last week as well. The city opened and expanded warming centers, reception centers, and looking at expanding out on amenities to support residents over that last week and right up till today still. We also were, while we were focused on emergency response as well and monitoring, you know, 911 calls, we were also doing wellness checks more broadly, whether that was through our community paramedic program and even a lot of our emergency response partners, policing, fire. It was an all-out call-out. And it was interesting, even though we're surrounded by technology, it just takes a power outage like this to realize word of mouth is sometimes the best strategy, and neighbors talking and neighborhoods talking. We really relied on that, and we still are, especially up to yesterday in remote parts of the city. As we're working on response, we are turning our minds to and starting to plan for cleanup, for recovery, and what that looks like. And I can tell you, based on what we've seen, and just power still not quite there, we're looking at a couple of months, I think, where we're going to be doing full cleanup across the city. I would recommend that residents track as best they can. We're doing daily updates on our city website on all of the services that are available and open, any programs, any supports that could be offered to residents. I would say go there. We are still leveraging radio, we're still leveraging all of the other sort of media as best we can as well. In those coming weeks, we'll be more focused on, as I mentioned, the cleanup. We'll be looking at waste and getting rid of debris. We'll be looking at, for now and for this week at least, maintaining our warming centers, more for even just trades that are coming in, hydro workers that are coming in, and our own staff that are out there in the field and need to have a place of refuge. So we're going to keep those there. And so as of today, the positive, I really want to leave a note, was, you know, hydro was quite confident that significant portions of the entire city, all four corners and in between, power was being restored. Now, again, I am tempering that with, there are very many localized circumstances that are out there. But they have been working 24/7, certainly want to commend them. And they've been, and we've been working in tandem with them to make sure they can get to those locations and to do the repairs that are needed. So Deputy Mayor, I'll just start to conclude that we remain in a state of emergency. Our EOC is meeting actively and daily. I foresee the state of emergency staying in place at least until we're quite confident that the vast majority of power is restored back to the city, and then we're able to get into that more full recovery phase of this incident and event. We're going to continue to remain in response mode because, as I mentioned, we're not just managing a post-storm event, but flooding is a concern. That is not something that just happens in a single incident. We're expecting that there's going to be significant melt and flow through the northern half of the city over the coming month, and so we're staying diligent and focused on that as well. Just a couple of final sort of rounding out updates to give you sort of a scope and scale. So our 911 calls since the storm started over the first week increased by about 25%. It's not to say that they are all, you know, life emergencies that were being responded to. And quite frankly, it was one of the only ways to communicate for a very short period of time as communications were being brought back online. Our call center, we activated and extended, we were getting about double the phone calls on a daily basis. So we were getting about 450 on average daily calls, still the case over the last week and a half. Normally, we get about 200 on a regular day. I mentioned the extensive wellness checks, the outreach, the phone calls, the door-knocking that not only our community paramedics did, but many of our neighbors offered up resources right down from municipalities in Durham region to other neighboring communities, as we did for other neighbors that were in need in the north and so on. It's just been an amazing thing to see, but we've done well, over 500 direct check-ins with community members. And again, whether it was word of mouth or some other focus like long-term care homes where there are many vulnerable citizens. We're going to be providing communications after today for our continued response up to the weekend. So we'll have better information for the public with respect to warming centers remaining, how we're going to be managing waste and debris over the coming weeks and months. So again, I just said, please continue to track our website, continue to track that information. We'll try to get it out as timely as most possible. And I'll just conclude with a recognition and a thanks. So when I said the emergency control group came together, I mean, you're talking about all of those agencies collectively. There's hundreds and hundreds of people and staff and community members and neighbors and council and all individuals that are just rolling up the sleeves, passing along the information. And although everybody has a different experience through this, I think, again, we want to make sure that we are supporting all of our residents throughout the entire city. And so that's why I say we are starting to see some light, particularly for the north and rural areas, but we really need to remain diligent and focused on those areas. So with that, Deputy Mayor, I'll conclude my update. Certainly happy to answer any questions if you wish.
Thank you very much for that information. Do we have any questions? Seeing none at this point, thank you very much. I'd like to have a motion to receive the CEO's update. Mayor Elmsley, second it by Councillor Joyce, all in favor? Thank you. Also, at this time, the mayor would like to say a few words also, so if you would...
Thank you, and thank you, CAO, for the update. I certainly echo many of your statements and tell people out there that the return of hydro is our priority, particularly in the north. During this period of time, as head of council, I've been meeting with various ministers and talking to various ministers at the provincial level. I've received calls from the premier. I talked to Minister Dunlop, who paid us a visit on Sunday and toured some areas. I talked to the Minister of Housing and Rural Affairs, who reached out as well. And we have over 5,000 hydro workers now in the city of Coortle Lakes trying to bring back power to everybody, and I think that's so commendable. They come from as far away as Glacier Bay, Nova Scotia. So, you know, it's just an incredible call-out by folks to help out their fellow Canadians. So hats off to them. I've been touring the municipality with some councillors and the CAO, trying to get to every corner to see what folks are putting up with and how they're faring, and wherever possible, getting help for them. We were out on the weekend and every day in between. And certainly, everybody is pulling together and helping out their neighbors and friends. It's heartening to see how the community has come together to look after each other. And I will continue by asking the residents that, check on your neighbors, particularly if they're elderly, infirmed, or have a disability. Also, you know, hope that you try to remain patient, be helpful, kind, polite, and we will get through this. This is, this is not the future. We're going to get back to normal, and we're committed to getting back to normal. If you need things, let us know. Consult the city's social media page and websites for the latest updates. And we'll worry about cleanup later. I know some of it is happening now. People can go to the landfills. We had reports that there were long, long lineups there, but by the afternoon, there was almost nobody there. And this morning, Director Robinson showed us a picture of the lineup for the Lindsay landfill, and there were no cars at all. So just pick your times. If you feel you have to get rid of brush and debris and want to take it to the landfill, just be strategic in when you pick your time. And as I say, the cleanup will come later. And just let's all be cognizant that this emergency is ongoing, and we're going to deal with it to the best of our ability. So with that, Deputy Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Is there any questions for the mayor? I've seen none, thanks. Sorry, I got one. Councillor Yeo.
Yeah, and I just thank you for the updates and through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. A question to either one of the updaters about, and I know it's early, but I'm getting it asked quite frequently, about cleanup. And I know there might not be an answer yet, but how soon can we expect an answer on the extent of cleanup? People are asking if the brush can be put on the side of the road and chipped or cleaned up by our people. So that's, that's my question is the extent of the cleanup. And I know, like I said, I know it's early, and if we can do it in the press release later, so, but just a question.
Yeah, I think the mayor can answer that one.
Through you, Chair. So there is communications that has been going out. I certainly acknowledge and appreciate, especially your word, Councillor Yeo, a lot are just coming online over the last couple of days, for sure. We are doubling up on rural waste collection this week for bags. If it's food waste, put it in there as well. For urban areas, we will have normal waste collection. It is also organics, and we are expanding out. Put your organics out on Friday if it's food waste, and it will be covered there. There are a number of locations for food waste specifically, some that are serving the north area. We have those in the press release listed as well. For debris, we've been essentially solely focused on our own sort of roads and clearing spaces and so that hydro can get in. We're starting to shift to areas that have some power stabilized and are looking at chipping and cleanup of parks, sidewalks, sort of roads more locally. We are going to be launching a curbside pickup of debris. We will be publishing when those times are. And what we've been saying to residents in our communications to date is bundle up your debris. debris, don't block sidewalks, don't put it on the road edge. We will be coming around to pick it up if you're unable to dispose of it, either at the landfills or otherwise. So thanks for the question. We will be putting that out in a little bit more detail and where and what drop-offs there are and times for that in the coming week and weeks.
Thank you, and I do appreciate that because you're absolutely right. I still don't have anything working at my house besides my cellphone, and I just got that back the day before yesterday. So I'm right now hotspotting, which is new to me. I didn't know what a hotspot was. I thought it was something that hurt, but I'm hotspotting off my phone to be here today. So we still don't have any power in the majority of Norland on the side streets. We have power on the main thoroughfare. And people have great patience, and they're doing pretty good. The frustration levels up, but they're handling it pretty good. So these updates are slow getting to people like me and my neighbors and stuff. So the more I know, the more I can share. So I thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Anybody? Yes, Counselor Warren.
Yeah, through you, Deputy Mayor. Just quickly, people would like to know why there is a fire ban. And it doesn't have to be a long explanation, but quickly, maybe the fire chief or the mayor could explain that.
I think I'll let the CAO do that as well, trying to keep operations with the operational people, and I'll deal with the other questions. So I think the CAO is prepared to answer this.
Okay.
Thank you through the chair then. And I apologize, I was going to mention it in my update about the burn ban specifically. I was trying to suggest that our emergency services remain fully and solely focused on response, both for power outages, for maintaining emergency response, and also focused on flood watch and flood management. The burn ban is typical every single year. There's no exceptions to it. It comes every April, and we just didn't want to strain and extend resources, so the burn ban remained in effect. There still is a high risk for fires, and we certainly don't want to create circumstances where we're diverting emergency response and services to unnecessary calls, quite frankly. So that ban is remaining in effect. There is information on the website to round out, because I know a lot of people have been asking whether or not we would be lifting it. We are not foreseeing any lifting of that ban in the foreseeable future.
Thank you. I just thought that should be stated. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none. In closing, I'd like to address the residents directly. We hear your pleas and help and understand the gravity of this situation that we're all living through. While some have come out of this side relatively unscattered, others are just assessing the vast damage, and still more remain in crisis mode, waiting it out. We see you, and we are working with hydro and reconnecting everyone back to the grid, and, as mentioned, begin the long process of cleanup. We will get there, and we will do it together. We've all witnessed folks coming together over the past week and to help each other to get through this, and this is what we need to continue to do. Support each other. Check on your neighbors. The compassion of your residents is what will see us through. In the meantime, the other work the city must continue, we are resuming business today of the committee and the whole to ensure that we don't lose sight of those important items. Top of mind of many is Ward 5 residents in the current by-election that opened last week. With this election wrapping up at 8:00 PM on Thursday, we will see a new representative for the North Ward of Lindsay and adding a fresh face to council to help steer the ship. While we can't say the city is operating as business as usual, today's a good opportunity to see some normously returning to the municipality as we start to get back to business, hearing deputations, receiving reports, and bringing forth the necessary bylaws to keep us moving forward. We are not moving away from the emergency operations, but rather focusing on responded recovery in tandem with regular operational agendas. So thank you, everybody out there, for all the help and the support that we've had. So now, I think, before we start and drop the agenda, I think the mayor also has a couple of announcements to make.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. These were announcements and things that were supposed to occur last week and obviously didn't, so they couldn't be done at a regular council meeting, and I think they're important notices for the community. Autism Awareness Month is celebrated through the month of April, but especially on April 2nd, the global day of autism awareness. It is time to share stories, raise awareness, and support those affected by this disorder. Local groups such as the Coorthalakes Autism Support Group are dedicated to creating an inclusive environment for individuals with autism, no matter where they fall on the spectrum. This group also works with caregivers, families, and other supports to provide information on services and treatments while inspiring acceptance and promoting understanding. We stand in solidarity with all those affected by autism, and we will continue to voice our support for you and your families and do what we can to foster inclusion and true acceptance. Also, April is Be a Donor Month, a time dedicated to raising awareness about organ donations and transplant. The waitlist for organs in Ontario averages 1,400 people, and every three days, one of those people dies while waiting. In Lindsay, just over 50% of residents are registered on the list, placing us at number 51 out of 170 communities in Ontario. If you would like to learn more or to register yourself to become a donor, go to beadonor.ca. You may very well save a life. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update. So let's get started. Could I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda, please? Counselor Perry, Counselor Richardson, all in favor? Thank you. Disclosure of capillary interest? Seeing none. And we'll start off with 4.4 is deputations. 4.1 is the overview of the Witness Blanket Art exhibit in support of truth and requisition and to be held at the Trinity Street Andrews Church in Cannington, Sharon Woodrow. You have five minutes.
Hi, thank you for having me here this afternoon. And my congratulations to the city for how you've been handling this whole situation that we've had. I'd like to draw your attention to something that's happening in the fall, and it will maybe take your minds off of what's been happening here. I would like to thank you, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor, councillors, and other guests that are here. My name is Sharon Woodrow. My preferred pronouns are she and her, and today I come here with my husband, Don. On the slides that you were given, the first slide says, "I come to tell you something exciting news and to ask you to participate." This September, for six weeks, Trinity St. Andrews United Church in Cannington is honored to be hosting a replica of the Witness Blanket. On the second slide, the Witness Blanket is not an actual blanket, but rather a two-ton, 12-meter-long, three-meter-high redwood cedar-framed tribute to residential school survivors. This artwork was designed by Vancouver Island resident Carrie Newman as a tribute to his father, who was a survivor. This artwork is designed in a curved shape. The First Nations culture, a blanket is often given as a gift to wrap around and to provide comfort, and that's what this blanket is shaped in. On the third slide, it shows over 800 items that are collected from residential schools from across Canada, from churches, from government buildings, and from donations. The blanket contains pictures of the collected items, directly printed onto wooden panels. Each item is QR-coded, telling its own story, and in the center is a full-size door. The door came from the Boys Infirmary at St. Michael's Residential School in Alert Bay, B.C. As a tribute to the atrocities that happened behind that door, this door must always remain open. Small handprints can be seen on the back of the door, holding it open. These are the handprints of Carrie Newman, the artist's young daughter, added at the time that the Witness Blanket was being made. A year ago, several people from our church traveled to Nipissing University to see the display of the replica blanket there and to meet with the university staff to discuss their concerns with hosting this exhibit. On Slide 6, the original three-dimensional Witness Blanket used to travel, but is now maintained at the Canadian Museum for Human Rights in Winnipeg, Manitoba. I was privileged to see this many years ago, and because of my passion and pleasure, it is that I'm bringing it to Cannington. Cannington is just a neighbor. We're not far away from here. I live here in Lindsay now, but that's where our farm was. The replica is one of two that travel across Canada, and we are one of only three locations in all of Ontario that are hosting it this year. There's no charge to visit it, however, we do have costs associated. The shipping costs alone are estimated to be just under $7,000. I've been applying for grants to get the money to do this, and we've had some donations. Volunteers will be available to guide people through and around and to help find the washrooms and so on. And we plan to be open daily from noon till 8:00 PM, with the exception of Monday. We'll take Mondays off. We have a quilting group that meets there, and they're quite big, so we wanted to leave them alone in the church. I did include in the directions on the slide presentation, a little bit of a, where is Cannington? Because we happen to be in the middle of nowhere. If you know where Cannington is, it's in the middle. We're straight north of Oshawa, for those that don't know, and not too far from here, half an hour west. I encourage you to look at the website, which is just witnessblanket.ca for more information. There's also videos included there, and videos will be included with the Witness Blanket when it comes to Cannington. I have a copy of a book that I picked up at the library here. It is called The Witness Blanket and available for borrowing from the library. There is another book that goes along with it called Picking Up the Pieces. The Witness Blanket will be on display on Canada's National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, which is September 30th. That's a Tuesday, and we're planning special recognition that day. The videos where Carrie Newman describes making the Witness Blanket, he talks about how many children were taken from their homes, many to become sick and to die, and he asks, "Did your school have a graveyard?" Can you imagine? Residential schools were designated to kill the Indian and the child, taking them away from their homes, their families, their way of life, their language, and their customs. Many did not make it, and those who did were changed forever. They were beaten, abused, starved, raped, and left to die. And this went on for generations. The last residential school, and it closed in the late 90s. It will take generations to recover, and that's what truth and reconciliation is all about. We are learning, and we pray that this will never, ever happen again. We want to teach our children and promise that they will never be a part of anything like this ever again. We're inviting school groups to come to see this, and we're inviting you.
If you could wrap up, please.
Yes. We ask you, please, to spread the word, promote, and come and visit the exhibit. Be part of the opening ceremonies or closing ceremonies. Be part of Canada's National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, and thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you. Just stay there in case there's any questions. Is there any questions for Sharon? I'm seeing none. Thank you very much for coming today. Oh, sorry. Mr... Oh, so Mr. Perry first.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. More just of a comment, really, if I can be indulged. I just want to say, tan si Sharon, kiawao, and thank you for coming and presenting today. Your honoring and your group's honoring of the visibility of Indigenous issues and needs and our history, even the hard parts, is a real need for all of us, as we're all treaty peoples. So I want to thank you for lifting that up and helping on that path towards reconciliation. So my people's language, micheff, marsee.
Mi gwich, Counselor Perry.
Any other questions? Counselor Warren, up there, go ahead.
Thank you through you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I just have a question. I was wondering if you have reached out to the truth and reconciliation community of Bob Cajun, because they'd be very interested in this.
Yes, we have, and they are part of. And the truth and reconciliation quilt will be a part of our display.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I see the mayor, please, go ahead. Nope, no, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. So on that, I'd like to have a motion that the deputation of Sharon Woodrow regarding the overview of the Witness Blanket art acquisition in support of truth and requisition, truth and the reconciliation to be held at Trinity Street Andrews Church, Cannington be received, and that the recommendation be brought forward to council for consideration in the next council meeting. First, Mayor Elensley. Second, Counselor Joyce. All in favor? Thank you. Next on is Bob Connell for road conditions on Mustang Drive, Emily. You have five minutes.
Good afternoon to the mayor, deputy mayor, and councillors. I am Bob Connell, and I am a resident of Mustang Drive. There are 21 residences on a 3.3-kilometer stretch of road that runs from Heights Road to Sturgeon Road. Of these 21 residences, 13 are seniors who have paid taxes to the city for a very long time. We have been putting up with an extremely poorly maintained and unsafe road for travel for far too long. We will no longer stay silent. This road is so rough most of the year that everyone that comes to visit always remarks about how terrible this road is. We want this changed permanently. This all came to a head this winter, when on Monday, February 24th, our road had not seen a plow since the morning of Tuesday, February 18th, following the storm of Family Day weekend. Yes, six days. The wind continued to blow the day of February 18th, and our road was filled back in with the snow by the afternoon from the northwest. It had reduced our road to a one-lane path on the south shoulder. Over the course of the next few days, several vehicles, including UPS, Canada Post, and many residents, went into the ditches because the road was not passable, approximately 15 in total. I personally pulled the Canada Post employee out of the ditch. Curiously, I asked her, "You travel a lot of roads on your daily route. Are there any roads like this?" Her response was quick, "No, this is the worst road I travel regardless of the time of year." After several call-in complaints from local residents, including myself, you would think that the roads department would, in the very least, with all their pickups driving around 24 hours a day, that they would investigate the formal complaints. The answer to this was no. On Monday, February 24th, after my personal second formal complaint, they finally decided to take a drive and see. Guess what? They couldn't get up our road in a four-wheel-drive pickup truck. And it gets better. We had a residence with a medical emergency mid-morning, and the ambulance came from the west and headed down our road. Once they were partway down and pushing through massive snowdrifts, they had no choice but to try and push on. My understanding is they were much longer getting to the call than they would have been if the road had been plowed properly, taking valuable patient care time. It is my understanding that they took the patient to Lindsay by going the longer route to the east to avoid the unplowed road. Luckily, this time, it worked out, and the patient is doing well and made it to the hospital. Later that day, two four-wheel-drive pickup trucks were stuck in the snowbanks facing each other at the base of a hill, completely blocking the road, waiting on a tow truck. Around 3:45 PM that day, the city finally dispatched a snowplow to come and clear the road. When he crested the hill to find the two trucks buried deep in the snow, he was traveling too fast to stop, crashing into the pickup trucks that were stuck at the base of the hill, which we get to repair as taxpayers. They were then waiting on police to arrive and tow trucks to come to get things moving. The many buses that travel our road were unable to get the children dropped off on Mustang Drive that afternoon, and parents had... Mustang Drive that afternoon and parents had to figure out how to get to Sturgeon Road to pick the kids up. Four-wheelers were used. All of this was preventable if our road had been maintained or someone bothered to follow up with the complaints that went in. Mustang Drive has two bridges on it that are unsafe, lacking guardrails to prevent a vehicle going over the edge and into the over 10-foot drop to the flowing ditch below, and structurally not safe for the many large farm equipment and farm-related trucks that travel Mustang Drive daily. It's my understanding that these bridges are in a review stage with the engineering department for replacement. I am hoping when these come to council for approval, you move forward with this replacement. This road only sees a grader two to three times per year and they never grade deep enough to remove the potholes that can be several inches deep. The people of Mustang Drive would like to see this road hardtopped as permanent solution. It's not a long stretch of road and sees a lot of local traffic. If that is not achievable in the near future, then the very least would be to put some better gravel and grade far more often, preferably not on garbage day, as it seems to always land that way. It has become a neighbourhood joke, when the road does finally see a grader, we bet that it will land on garbage day, making it difficult to grade around everyone's garbage and recycles. Garbage day is always Tuesday. You wouldn't think that that would be quite so difficult to schedule your road maintenance around, but it seems to be. I appreciate your time today and the work our council is doing and I look forward to seeing how the city plans to move forward to improve the maintenance and safety on Mustang Drive for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And you just stay there for a second, is there any questions for Mr. Connell? I have a couple of comments. Mr. Connell, we have met and we looked at your bridges and I've talked to engineering and I think we gave you some update that one bridge will be done this year and the next, the second bridge the following year and your concerns on those two bridges will be dealt with, which we had that conversation, if you want to add to that, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just for clarification, so the, the bridge further east is being designed this year, potentially for construction next year, subject to the 2026 budget process. So for this year, we are strictly designing the bridge only, the one further to the east.
Okay. If there's any possibility to move that along, that would be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for anybody? Okay, I'd like to have a motion that the deputation of Bob Connell regarding road conditions on Mustang Drive, formerly Township of Emily be received and that the recommendation be brought forward for council for consideration for the next regular council meeting. Counselor Richardson, seconded by Emmett Yo, Counselor Yo, sorry, all in favour? Thank you. Next on the agenda is 4.3, is the parking fine and signage recommendations for in downtown Lindsay, Wesley Foun and Wayne English. You have five minutes.
Good afternoon, council. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of the municipality. They have been nothing but supporter of the BIA and you guys are truly top-notch among your peers. I am here today to address what we consider an oversight, being recent changes to parking fines that affect our downtown area. We propose recommendations that align with our shared goal of having an inviting and resilient downtown, which is the heart of our municipality. As some of you know, the BIA has a long history of aligning downtown parking with that goal. Back in 2014, there was a parking study that the BIA successfully lobbied for the removal and paid, of the paid parking in the downtown instead of proposing a pay and display system. The rationale was the latter would incur a high financial cost to taxpayers and not provide a welcoming feeling for our downtown. The pilot project initiative was furthered in 2017 with an innovative approach of the BIA employing parking control officers to enforce the municipality's bylaws in the downtown on the municipality's behalf. It has proven to be a significant success both in terms of its low-cost provision and welcoming approach to parking in the downtown for all that visit. There is a reason why the parking officer's titles are BIA community liaisons. This program has given way to the envy and admiration for other municipalities, BIAs in the Ontario BIA Association. The success was further backed up by the 2021 parking study that was completed, recognizing the program through the recommendation it be replicated in our other community cores within the municipality. We are the only BIA with this arrangement across 444 municipalities and 270 registered BIAs across Ontario. This past November, we became aware through our officers while issuing tickets of a significant increase in parking fines implemented without prior consultation or notification to our BIA. It is, it is front-end loaded to allow for the issue to be put to bed over a several-year time period. We recognize that like everything else, cost increases over time with the same needed for bylaw fines, no exception. We believe that many of them are excessive though, especially so for common infractions such as exceeding the time limit of our two-hour free on-street parking. This section of the bylaw that enforces this two-hour time limit is specific to downtown Lindsay, so changes to this bylaw would not affect the rest of the municipality, both in terms of enforcement and given its limited regional capacity in which it applies, the revenue. We always aim to address stakeholders with solutions rather than problems. In that spirit, we propose in your attachment a scheduled adjustment of fines to be phased in over five years, addressing the inflation factor while ensuring the step-ups are gradual enough to continue the friendly downtown experience. We feel under this current structure is at best creating negative word-of-mouth amongst visitors and at worst, repel them from coming downtown relative to free parking alternatives. Unfortunately, this already is happening due to the BIA not being consulted in deciding the current path we are on. Research into parking fines across other municipalities in Ontario show that the new fine structure exceeds those of many Ontario municipalities, even in large urban areas. Our recommendation puts us closer in line with our neighbours. As we patiently await the citywide signage study to conclude, which we believe will bring much needed wayfinding, directional and parking signage, we would like to address a related issue as part of this request, two-hour free parking signage on the main streets. The existing two-hour free parking signage is sparse. We continually inform many confused visitors about this vital service on the main streets of our downtown. We propose the installation of attractive Lindsay Downtown BIA branded signage on the lamp posts along the main streets to provide the enhanced service compared to other downtowns, a proud service that we should advertise and thereby cultivate the welcoming atmosphere we are trying to encourage. This would utilize existing infrastructure to minimize cost. We are proud of the parking enforcement structure that together we have created, which has been lauded by our peers and proven to be a cost-effective strategy in improving the downtown experience. In that same spirit, we are really looking forward to the updated recommendations from staff regarding the 2021 parking study coming to council next quarter. So in summary, we request that the fines for the most common parking infractions in downtown Lindsay be incrementally increased over a five-year period as detailed in the attached table in your agenda. We request the creation of additional signage to inform visitors of the two-hour free parking on downtown Lindsay streets that is also included in your agenda. And that's it.
Right on time. Good job. I'll open that up, are there any questions? Counselor Richardson.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Foun, for coming today and I, you know, we truly do recognise the unique parking situation that you have fostered for our downtown. I just, two questions for clarification. One, the old fine, how long has that been in place?
Oh, I'd actually defer to Wayne, our community liaison on that. Come on in Wayne, this is our community liaison.
Your worship's honour my members of council, sorry. I would say it's been there since 2018 when I came on board and the, I think the bylaw was 2014 when it was implemented. It's, it was $20 at that time and for parking on the streets and it was $30 for a, for a parking ticket in the parking lots.
Thank you Wayne for that clarification. Also what I like part of this deputation as well is that, you know, you're actually providing a solution for us to, you know, recognise, so, and also when it comes to the wayfinding, this is something you would, you want to move forward to or you want council to move forward for funding for those signage?
Whatever is amendable to council. It's not a large cost to produce these signs. We're just asking for permission and preferably help is always beneficial, but if not, we're prepared to do it on our own too.
Any other questions? I have, I have one. Reference to enforcement, we talked about enforcement and you said a cost savings for the municipality, can you explain that a little more, please?
Yes, so predates me, but from 2014, when you're putting in pay into display systems, they're costly to do. And for the span of what we need to do for the downtown, it was in hundreds of thousands or like high hundreds of thousands back in $2014. So we avoided those costs, but that was hard infrastructure cost. The actual large cost savings was the year-over-year cost savings of how much it costs us to enforce the parking relative to what it would have cost the bylaw, which is orders of magnitude larger.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I see no more questions, so could I have a motion that the deputation of Wesley Foun and Wayne English of the Lindsay Downtown BIA regarding parking fines and signings recommendations in the downtown of Lindsay be received and that the recommendations be brought forward to council for consideration at the next regular council meeting? Counselor Richardson, second. Counselor Warren, all in favour? Thank you. Thank you. 4.4, property tax relief for persons with disabilities, Bill McConnell. And you also have five minutes also.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me. I certainly am a grateful Canadian where I don't feel like I'm in conundrums discussing tariffs at this point in time, or tariffs rather, but when all said and done, I appreciate your time to hear me out. First and foremost, I am a labourer with Launa Local 183 and I am proud to support the women and men that are out trying to restore our power because I was once an employee of that company through my union, so they need to be applauded for all the work that they do. I'm here simply because I am no longer employed with that particular outfit. I was diagnosed with a medical condition two years ago and I'm single and I have a home over in Seabright that I have been proud to maintain my property taxes for the last seven years while I was working full-time or seasonal as it were. And unfortunately, it's taken me out of my vocation due to the current circumstances that I'm dealing with and faced with. However, I was forced to use credit cards to cover my property tax bill for the last two years, waiting for decisions to be rendered in regards to support through both my union and the government. It's not a very, may I say, a very comfortable circumstance to be in and requesting such. However, the relief that I understand that is available through our municipalities throughout the province of Ontario, I only discovered listening to 6:80 AM on the radio in my car a few months ago, Olivia Chow was discussing the concerns that the metro area was having regarding the increases in their property tax. And she had mentioned some of the programs that offer relief and that's when I became aware. So I obviously investigated and checked into it through this municipality and they explained how it works. So here I am, I'm requesting that due to the fact that I wasn't aware two years ago that if there was some possibility of amending the fact that I did make those, those property tax bills on time, unfortunately, at a very costly and expensive effort, that maybe there would be some relief that I could appeal and apply to regarding my tax bills for the last two years and obviously moving forward. It's understandable that, you know, these programs are not forthwith and fully transparent on website or to the public, you've got to go digging. I've supplied one copy to an individual when I came in of my support and it's a four-step process on the internet and not everybody is possibly internet or computer literate. My suggestion is that if possible, these programs for seniors and those with disability are far more transparent and available to the public as opposed to hidden. I realise that the potential of every Tom, Dick and Harry may come out of the woodpile looking for this, but I'm not one of them. But at any, at any extent, it's not easy for me to be here in public to discuss this by any means, but I certainly welcome any support available and, you know, we're all doing our best when we're in this position and no one wants to ask for a handout, but unfortunately I am. So pretty well that's all I've got to say.
Thank you and thank you very much for coming today. Just stay there for a second in case there's any questions. See any questions? I'm seeing none. Again, thank you very much for coming today. And could I have a motion that the deputation of Bill McConnell regarding property tax relief for, for persons with disabilities be received and that the recommendations be brought forward to council for consideration for the next regular council meeting? Counselor Perry, second it. Counselor Yo, all in favour? Thank you. Next on the agenda is a request to purchase the road allowance adjacent to 15 Pots Shore Road, Fennlin, Diana Key and Hayden Eltie, if I pronounced that properly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. I don't often visit committee of the whole, so it's nice to see a different setting. My name is Diana Key, I am the Principal Planner and Manager of Planning Services at DMW's Associates Limited. With me today is the owner, I knew you did pronounce it correctly, Mr. Chair, so good, Mr. Eltie, who is the owner of the subject property that is adjacent, actually is a budding and east of the Shore Road allowance. So back in, I believe it was June of last year, Mr. Eltie approached our company looking for assistance in support of hopefully purchasing, purchase, sorry, I can't speak today, purchasing the Shore Road allowance that is directly abutting his property. We reviewed the bylaw as well as council's resolution, which indicates, and I've known this from experience and working here, that we know the city does not typically and council does not support the private purchase of Shore Road allowance that often offers access to the water for the visiting public. However, there is an exception to that rule and it is number eight in the bylaw and that is to ensure that if you are making this request, that there's other available options in the immediate vicinity, immediate's not defined, however, but we did review the whole lake just to see what other options are available to continue to give the public private or public ac- access to the lake in favour of perhaps our client purchasing the Shore Road allowance that is next to his property. We discovered seven other potential areas, the most prominent of course being the public boat launch as well as the park and camping area in Fennlin Falls and then from there, there were six other potential sites. So just to give you a little description, even though I know all the information is in the package, the part one of that sketch of a survey that we had completed demonstrates one, that my client's buildings are encroaching onto the Shore Road allowance unfortunately. Two, the Shore Road allowance is heavily vegetated, so there's a lot of constraint for the public to actually access the water using that property. And the third item is that our client's property is very undersized. The zoning bylaw- The zoning bylaw requires a 35-meter frontage, he has 15. It also requires a 2,000-square-meter lot area, and he has about 726 square meters. So the purchase would not only alleviate the encroachment, it would also bring his property into conformity with the frontage and bring it closer to conformity with the lot area. In addition to that, the purchase itself is really to allow for his family to enjoy the property without the concern of his buildings encroaching onto what is not his property, city-owned land, as well as giving them a little more frontage and area. They do have three kids, so you want enough space to be able to run around. We are confident that because there are other locations around the lake where the public can access the site that are either of similar size and definitely not as heavily constrained with vegetation, and also don't have other abutting buildings encroaching onto those shore road allowances, that hopefully council can reconsider staff's decision to deny the purchase of the shore road allowance. And there's also the opportunity that if we can compromise where my client can purchase a portion of the shore road allowance, at least to get rid of the encroachment, and of course, meaning the setbacks, that there still remains a portion of that shore road allowance where the public could access the site should they wish to. From here, my client is also here to speak to you today, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, do I have any questions for? Yes, Mr. Mayor Ellensley.
Thank you. I'm very familiar with that piece of property. How long has your client owned that property, if I may ask?
Through you, Mr. Chair, they purchased the property in August of 2023.
I'm going back probably to 2011, 2012. The previous owners approached about purchasing that shoreline or road allowance leading to water. And I was a councillor at the time, and the other residents of Pots Shore objected strenuously to that happening. So I think unless things have changed, it could be an uphill struggle. Your suggestion of perhaps reducing the size of the road allowance, I think it is a 66-foot, but it may be 33, but I thought it was 66.
It's 23 meters, yes, around.
Okay. So I'm just giving you a heads up that the neighbors were not amenable to that being sold more than 10 years ago. Thank you.
Counsel Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. Echoing some of the sentiments of the mayor here, I just have a couple of quick questions. So clearly, there was an encroachment prior to the purchase. So you also made allude to the fact that there could be a compromise. What would that compromise look like from your client's standpoint?
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you for that question. The compromise would be that we could sever as much land from the shore allowance that would remove the encroachment and meet the setbacks of the zoning bylaw, and add that to my client's property, and then the balance would be retained with the city to provide access. I'm not sure what the size of it would be, but we could provide that information, absolutely.
If you don't mind, if you would, before the next council meeting, if we had that in front of us, it would certainly help with making some decisions. Thank you.
Absolutely. And just to touch upon the neighbors, one step ahead of ya. We did have conversations, and of course, my client, who will be speaking to this, will provide some insight to the conversations that he's had with his neighbors with respect to this other, the second round, I guess, of trying to purchase the road allowance. Thank you.
Counsel Perry.
Thanks very much, and thanks for coming today. I'm the ward councillor for Ward Three, where the property is located. Just to build on the mayor's questions, if I could, how many neighbors were consulted? And what was the process for that? I know you've alluded to it, or when will we have that information in more detail?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, my client can provide that to you. However, I know that he's definitely reached out to the neighbors to the east and west of him, just wanted to notify them and to see if they had of any concern. But there is also a local road association that needs, but I will let Mr. Eltai get into that.
Thanks very much. And also, just for clarity on the compromise as it stands now, just so I'm clear, is the compromise that the severance would then have that encroachment land go to the owner? Or would it revert to the city's remaining portion of the allowance?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we would sever the portion that would then be added to my client's property, and the retained would be with the city.
So the encroachment would go to the owner?
Correct.
How long has the encroachment been there?
Probably, I'm not sure when it was built. Yeah, I'd have to have.
So the compromise is that the owner gets the encroachment? That's the compromise?
The compromise is to at least purchase a portion of the property to enlarge the overall lot area for my client and remove that encroachment.
Removing the encroachment by including it with the owner's land, correct?
That's right.
And paying the value of the land, is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. Just want to understand the compromise. Yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The five minutes was for both of yous, but if you have any questions for the owner, we will honor a question if anybody has any questions for him, but. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to point out to you that the five minutes was for both of yous, okay? So unfortunately, your time is up. Okay. Thank you for that, and thank you for coming. I'd like to have a motion to we, for the deputation of Diane Key of DM Willis Association Limited and Hayden Eltai regarding the request of the purchase of the road allowance adjacent to 15 Pots Shore Road, Fenland, be received? And that the recommendation be brought forward to council for consideration at the next regular council meeting. Counsel Perry, second it. Counsel Richardson, all in favor? Thank you. Moving forward, 4.6, road conditions on Four Points Road, Dunstford. Amanda Newton and David Newton, just so you both know that you have five minutes for both of yous. Go ahead, thanks.
Yeah, I'll give you the Reader's Digest version, not my dad. Good afternoon, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Amanda Newton, and this is my father, David Newton. My parents have lived on Four Points Road for almost 40 years. There are currently 22 families that live on this road, all of which are aware that we are here today and the nature of our attendance. Over the last several years, Four Points Road has been in a state of deterioration in its entirety, stretching from Highway 36 all the way to Sturgeon Road. I have taken pictures here of the most recent state of the road as reference. In the spring of last year, my dad called the roads department and a case number was open. Some of the neighbors also called in with the same road complaint. After dad's case was opened, the road was graded four times between spring and fall. However, before the first snowfall, all the old potholes were back with vengeance. We got some reprieve with the amount of snow on the road this year. However, our current spring has brought worsened road conditions. Each year, the city's efforts upgrading are done in vain. The money spent and the manpower, the money for the materials, the gas and the use of equipment over and over again, and there is little time we get to use the road safely before it becomes a hazard. I visited the roads department to open another case just a couple of weeks ago. It may have been because we were already on the list to have the gravel, but I'm going to feed my ego and say that it was the roads department responding quickly to my case. They added some gravel over some small parts of the road, mostly focusing on the entrance of the road from Highway 36 and around the flooded areas near the bridge. Just days later, the potholes were back. My mother now cannot safely ride the road without it directly impacting the state of her health, but it's not just the local residents that is problematic. All our roads, including Four Points, should be safe for our first responders. No offense, Dan, but my parents are aging. They both have needed EMS over the last few years and had a large fire that brought our ever-amazing firefighters to their property. Which brings me to a valid question, how much repair of first responder vehicle damages incurred by traveling down poured road conditions is the city willing to pay for? I'm not even talking about our own tires, wheels, suspension components, steering, and also the undercarriage and exhaust system that some residents had to incur on a continuing basis. This list, we know of many of these roads, not all, but many, and we have visited some of them, so we can try to understand how some of these roads on your list take precedence over Four Points, which is not even on the list. According to some residents, Four Points was actually on the list prior to your term, Mr. Mayor, and I was wondering if you could confirm that this is truth or just a rumor? If it in fact was on the list, what has changed to have it removed? Speaking of the list, Daytona Beach Road, my road, was not even on the list. In fact, we, the residents, still cannot understand how our road, which had no imperfections that we were aware of, got resurfaced or slurry sealed, or whatever the procedure is that was done last summer. The roads department added so much material to our perfectly fine road that they had to return and taper all driveways, gravel and asphalt, so that the residents could drive in and out. Both the cost of fixing a road that didn't need fixing and to correct over a dozen driveways was a tremendous cost to the city. Maybe you can help me understand the rationale behind your decision. We would respectfully invite you to take time to drive down Four Points Road and see for yourself the disastrous state it is in, and at that time, will you be able to confidently tell us that this road meets the minimum safety requirements? Our goal today is to please consider giving Four Points a safer and permanent road surface. In conclusion, we would like to ask, what is your criteria for deciding which roads are in place, are placed on the list? Who makes these decisions and who, and do those making these decisions actually drive on these roads before deciding? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just stay there in case there's any questions. Any questions? Seeing none. That case, they'll make a motion to receive that the deputation of Amanda Newton and David Newton regarding the road conditions of Four Points Road in Dunstford be received? And that the recommendation be brought forward to council for consideration in the next regular council meeting. Counsel Warren, second it. Counsel Perry, all in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, moving forward, no correspondence, and we'll get right into presentations. And the first presentation, 6.1, is the agricultural profile update for Peterborough County and Coortle Lakes. And we have Paul Buckley and Greg Bacon.
Thanks, thanks for having us. We have a slide presentation, it'll hopefully be up in a minute. In the meantime, we heard that downtown Lindsay is the heart of Coortle Lakes, but maybe we're here to convince you otherwise, and maybe it's agriculture. Yeah, so we don't make a habit of coming to too many council meetings or committee of the whole, so we thought with this first slide, we'd just maybe explain a little bit about our local federation and how we interact with the city of Coortle Lakes and council. On that diagram, you can see us, the Coortle Halliburton Federation of Agriculture, and then there's just a few arrows that go down to the people that we kind of deal with on a more regular basis. On the left side, we can see there's City Coortle Lakes Economic Development through Kelly Maloney. She's kind of our first point of contact for anything to do with the city. We normally get maybe one formal update from her at our meetings each year, and a recent project that we've worked on through her is the Farm 911 Emily Project signs. That's the yellow signs you might have seen for, to get civic addresses on farm properties if there's any problems, just to give EMS and that a better way to locate the properties. Then moving to the other side, there's the City Coortle Lakes Ag Advisory Board. We occasionally attend meetings to that if there's anything we need to raise with them or discuss. Something we've been working on them, working with them recently, was the tree cutting bylaw, providing comments through that. And then if you move to the center, the VIP tour, that's something we do in conjunction with the Ag Advisory, and that's, we're going to speak to it a little bit later, but it's a day tour designed for council and key staff to come out and learn a little bit about agriculture and current issues. And that arrow goes down to council as, you know, it's kind of our main way of interacting. And then we have that blue arrow we're kind of wrapping around as us kind of coming directly to the council, which we don't do very often, but today, we're presenting a report, and we're trying to hopefully engage more with council and develop our relationship with you. Annually, we have a few councillors to a meeting to discuss issues, but we might be here doing delegations more often. Next slide, please. So getting to the agricultural profile update that we had commissioned, it was funded through the Peterborough County Federation of Agriculture, ourselves, Coortle Halliburton, and we applied for some funding through the Ontario Federation to do it. Planscape completed it, and it was an update to a previous economic impact assessment and development study. I think it was done in 2006. And this study takes that, the current census data, impact data, and a partial update that was done in 2016. And it provides a current picture of agriculture in the Coortle Lakes. You guys should have been provided with the executive summary, and there is like a one-page double-sided fact sheet there that we're going to pull up a few things in the slides with if you want to follow along. We're going to share a couple perspectives from the report here today, but there's lots of information in there, and hoping the municipality can use it in support of decisions that they make, along with our board, if there's any thing that council would like to understand that's within the report. Just some broad points from it. Ag is a major component of the local economy and the dominant land use. It's a well-established, stable industry, and it's been here for more than 200 years, and we have a very, very production profile with many different types of agriculture. Next slide. So we're going to go over kind of two different takeaways from the report, and Greg's going to deal with this first one.
Good afternoon. The city of Coortle Lakes is a strong agricultural tradition, and these strengths should not be taken for granted. The decline in agricultural land base is becoming concerning. Good agricultural land is limited and non-renewable. In 2016, Statistics Canada reported that only 7% of Canada's landmass was farmland, and much less is prime farmland. As the slide shows, the city of Coortle Lakes has lost 48,299 acres of farmland in the last 10 years, and that was last reported in '21, requiring us as farmers to produce more with less with added pressures from tiling, removing brush, fence rows, restriction, and with restrictions from the city of Coortle Lakes, proposed example, proposed tree cutting and bylaws dealing with conservation authorities for outlets and what they EP or environmentally protect, making it harder to make up for the loss of farmland. The conflicts between non-farm residents, local farmers and the city of Coortle Lakes can have an impact on us as well. From the sight of self-propelled sprayers, aerial application, the smell of livestock operations, and simply moving farm equipment from one farm to another, buffers between urban and rural land use are necessary to protect agricultural land. As good stewards of the land that we farm, I cannot stress enough that we are improving soil health for the next generation to come, and I encourage more involvement from And I encourage more involvement from city staff and city councillors to help us work with you to ensure that we can feed the city for decades to come.
Next slide. So the second one, I'm just going to kind of go over a little bit of the ag sector and some of the numbers behind it. So in the black box there, the, in the top corner, we'll start. Um, so that's showing revenue per farm. Uh, and then that's the census data. So we can see that since 2011 to 2021, revenue has increased by almost 100%. Uh, but then if we go adjacent to that, uh, we can see the expenses operating has also increased by about 100%. So, and then I took that and, and made a graph there of the red and the blue line, just to kind of illustrate that revenue and expenses are essentially in line. So the revenue has increased, but so has expenses. However, then if you take that and then look at the bottom where there's those three circles for the average farm capital, um, with revenue expenses being this similar, that means margins have remained stable. However, with capital, that's purchasing things like tractors, land, all the things we need to make business go. In that same period, those things have increased by almost 150%. So I'm sharing that just to give you a perspective on agriculture. It's a stable business here in Cora Lakes, but it's under pressure with rising cost, rising costs to do business, which no doubt has increased greatly since 2021. That said, this is, can be seen as a positive for City Cora Lakes. Um, the previous economic study had found that for each dollar generated by the ag sector, there was a $3 impact on the local economy. Um, looking around a little bit, uh, I found that City Cora Lakes has a more current community analysis by McSweeney. They used a value of $2.2. Um, I, I couldn't find a reference to that. I don't know, it's maybe the provincial average. But either way, in the bottom corner, we use both of those numbers. Um, so what I did is we have the total operating revenues. Uh, so the 2021 number is $180 million. So if we move over, if we multiply that by three, it comes out to 500 million or half a billion dollars. If we take the lower amount for 2.2, it's about $400 million. And then since that graph is quite linear, I applied the same projection to it to move from 2021 to 2025. So that operating revenues would be 227 or 228 million dollars. And if we apply those factors to it, it's well over a billion, approaching a quarter-billion-dollar industry here just in the Cora Lakes, year over year. This multiplication factor, whether it's three or 2.2, I would suggest is quite a bit larger. Is very important to the City Cora Lakes. I would suggest that because we have a lot of ag support businesses around here that neighboring areas come in to use. So if 2.2 is the average for the provincial, I would suggest that Cora Lakes is, is yeah, definitely three or maybe even higher. Next slide. Um, so then just quickly, um, this visual shows the makeup of farms by type in Cora Lakes. So I highlighted two of them, cash crops approaching 400 and cattle also around 400, but miscellaneous and animal combination. Those are mainly livestock as well. So there's a very strong livestock ag base here in Cora Lakes. And I just kind of wanted to like showcase it a little bit. Livestock operations really do, and not unlike any other parts of ag business, there's a lot of support businesses that go in to support that livestock industry. Um, to name a few, tractor and equipment, uh, sales repairs, ag retail stores, community pastures, rural and ag lands to support them, abattoirs, sale barns, grain and feed elevators, veterinarians, and so on. Uh, some of those businesses currently are under stress in Cora Lakes. And in other areas around here, those have disappeared. Um, therefore maintaining and therefore to maintain and grow that half to three-quarter-billion-dollar annual business here in Cora Lakes, um, we are very dependent on our support businesses as well as primary production. In a similar way, with land use, uh, when we're talking about livestock production, um, livestock operations can utilize um, a lot of rural lands and agricultural lands that are not prime. Uh, Greg mentioned that there's not a lot of prime agricultural land available and it's disappearing quickly. So these are well-suited to our area, and they can make use of some of those rural lands. However, rural lands don't, aren't afforded the same protection as agricultural lands, um, for protecting and encroachment for agricultural lands. This study doesn't specifically get into it, but the people that did it, they were talking about some of the other studies that were done um, for similar areas. And we are fortunate here that we still have our ag base and our support industries. Uh, you don't have to go very far and, and with livestock specifically, you know, in the Golden Horseshoe or the GTA, um, a lot of those, there's not new sale barns going up. They can't be supported. Um, so there's going to be a lot more demand for these things. And we have that infrastructure here in Cora Lakes right now. Next slide.
Uh, so basically, we, we just want to get you guys on par, sorry, on par here. Um, we'd like to personally ask the City Cora Lakes Councilor staff that would apply to our large impact on the agricultural infrastructure, the City Cora Lakes, to show more engagement and please intend, or please intend our VIP tour that will be held mid-September this year. We cannot stress enough how important the ag sector in the Cora Lakes is. And we are hoping moving forward, we can work together and improve some of our concerns.
How are we, how are we for time? Are we?
Keep, keep going if you have more to share.
No, that kind of wraps up our presentation. Essentially, yeah, we have, we're just hoping that we can engage a little more with council. Agriculture is very significant, and hopefully we've displayed that with the presentation. This is, we don't do this very often, so hopefully some of the stuff went. Yeah, I do have the CKL Economic Development Strategy. I did come across that when I was looking, just to see, uh, to try to maybe rank ourselves with some other industries in Cora Lakes. I was a little disappointed with that development strategy. In my notes, like when I reviewed it, it outlined five priorities in that report. Um, agriculture only made a subsection of the fourth priority, and there's no concrete actions in there, just uh, exploring actions and partnering with organizations. With agriculture being the dominant economic driver of the area, it'd really be nice to see more attention paid to it. We do have, speaking to that, like we occasionally have groups come see us. Probably the Conservation Authority is one of the worst offenders of it. Um, they come and require our input, and they, we go and provide it. Um, however, when we ask for a follow-up on it or what comes out of it, we don't, uh, we don't really see them again. So, and like this economic development strategy, we sent at least three directors there and, and an ag development was there too. And it just, the follow-through is not what we would like to see. So that's maybe one of the reasons why we're coming to speak here today. If you guys want input, we have an engaged board who's trying to promote agriculture more. So please utilize us. We are volunteers though, so we don't peruse the city site as much as some people might. So anyways, just a couple comments. We're open to get any questions. That report is available, and hopefully it can be utilized.
Thank you. We'll just open up for questions now. Uh, Counselor Richardson.
Thank you, and through you. Thank you very much for coming today, gentlemen. And you did a great job, by the way. Um, we certainly do recognize the impact that the ag community does have on us as a whole in the picture. Um, but it's good that you could come today and provide this overview, plus, you know, you know, push out those concerns and issues that you have because uh, doing that brings it to the forefront, and um, we need to recognize that as well. So just a couple quick questions. Uh, cost of doing business. You've been impacted by the pandemic. You've been impacted by automation. You've been impacted by land prices. On climate change, obviously, with it, when it comes to cropping and whatnot. What do you think, how, how we can support you when it comes to some of those major challenges? I know that's a big high in the sky kind of question, but those are things that we need to understand better.
Yeah, yeah, so that is one thing. Um, I don't think we're outside of the group that has been impacted by a lot of those things. It's getting more difficult to do business, for sure. There's a lot more uncertainties. What I would say is it would be, what you guys could do is, it would be really nice if those uncertainties didn't have to include doing business with the City Cora Lakes um, in ways like, you know, with all of those things, you know, changes, like agriculture, you know, as stable and uh, robust as agriculture is in this area, uh, we still need to be able to innovate and uh, change. And we don't want to be held up, I would say, especially just by things like maybe development permits and things like that. One thing I was thinking of is if we want to talk about tariffs and stuff like that, say I'm a fertilizer distributor in the area, and I need to put in extra storage in order to bring in product to avoid these tariffs that are maybe changing day by day, week by week, uh, how long would it take me to put in expansion on my business to, to actually put that up? I would suggest it's maybe in the, like it's years. Like it's not in an area, it's not in a timeline that we can react to things. So, like as an example, like that would be one I would give. So if there's, yeah, just a way, and I know that there's, well, on the VIP tour, we've had businesses that have had to relocate because they couldn't get done with what they wanted to with their ag outlet stores and things like that. So um, just to decrease the risk to our businesses, like that would be something, and specifically to those ag support businesses.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Warren.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And thank you for coming, uh, great presentation. Um, and agriculture is our number one economic driver in City of Cora Lakes and, and needs to be supported, for sure. Um, just a couple quick questions, and you kind of touched on it with the tariffs. But, so there's a movement to, you know, um, produce locally, um, and being more self-sufficient. How do you see that changing agriculture um, in our area? You touched on, you know, being able to, um, you know, sell things off the farm more readily. That's my first question, anyway. Yeah, how do you see that uh, changing agriculture in, in Cora Lakes?
Uh, so just to clarify, your question is with, like, being more locally.
With the changes that are coming, um, and a movement to be, um, for Canada, it'd be more self-sufficient, you know, especially in our area also. How can we help you? I guess you, you touched on it, um, allowing more maybe on-farm uh, stores or other services. Um, you said that farms had to move out of the area because we were not able to um, allow certain things? So can you just expand on that?
Yeah, so I think that kind of almost, like my previous comments kind of addressed that and just, um, like our, like, we do primary production, me and Greg, and then our, we rely on other businesses to do that. And then, you know, we sell to other businesses locally um, that then do other things, you know, they maybe ship grain or cattle or things like that. But one of the points, and we actually, we're here speaking at the Rural Zoning Bylaw about a similar, this issue about really stressing the importance of all the support businesses that go in behind primary ag. Some of the examples you gave, they could be called diversified on-farm use. And when we were looking at the zoning bylaws for that, it was even, it was more permissive for diversified on-farm uses, which would be little shops and things like that. But it, it wasn't providing the same flexibility for actual farm support businesses. And in some cases, they were listed in both that categories with the diversified on-farm uses being more permissible than the actual, if you went through the, the planning process for the others. So again, just coming back to like, really trying to allow, and like, we're not asking for changes to parking tickets or things like that. Like we just, we can operate. We just don't need more additional things to hinder us from doing our business and the support businesses that we have. That's the kind of main thing. Yeah, we don't need grants, we don't need any of that stuff. We just need to be allowed to do our, our business.
Well, thank you for that. And just, um, my other question is, um, attracting younger people to farming in our area. Um, and in the, the other report, there was talk about, um, you know, Victoria County career services. But how do you, how do you feel? Or how, what, what ideas might you have to attract younger people to agricultural industry in our, our riding, our, our city?
I would suggest that you don't need to do anything. There's enough farmers being displaced from other areas in Ontario now that they are coming here to try to set up operations and farm. Like we are having, having a hard time going back to that capital increase in capital. Uh, me and Greg, I wouldn't say are old by any means. And uh, you know, it's competitive. Like we are competing with people that are displaced from other areas. Uh, people, rural people that are displaced that have enough money to go and purchase 50 acres and turn it into their own recreational area. And um, and expansion, like we see Lindsay growing. Uh, I don't think there's a lot of need to, to go out and, and try to attract, like, there's nothing wrong with that, but I, I, there's no shortage of people that want to run agricultural businesses and support businesses. They just need the ability to do it.
That's great news. Thank you very much.
Uh, Counselor Joyce.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you. Uh, just a comment and a quick question. One is, I would posit that downtown Lindsay is a center for tourism, but the heartbeat of our community is the agricultural sector. I'm with you on that 100%. Um, your VIP tour, I missed it last year. Uh, when, our calendars fill up, and it's not intentionally. Their calendars fill up rather rapidly. What is the date this year?
We haven't quite, sorry, we haven't quite got the date pinned right down, but it will be right in the middle of September, roughly.
Yeah, you know, I was fully aware I couldn't make it because there was a conflict, but if you can get that date out earlier.
Yeah, I'll try to get it to you guys as soon as possible.
Once, once I, you know, we make a Once I, you know, we make a commitment, it's it's hard to back out of something. So I'd rather commit to your, the VIP tour first.
Yeah, I would suggest, like, we're going to be following up with Ag Advisory probably immediately after this to to start moving on those things. So yeah, we'll have it. But it, the last, it's been September 16th, I think, the last time, and then September 15th before that. So you can kind of count on the middle of September. And I guess while we're on that subject, it's great to have counsel here, but it would be really good, based on what the tour is going to be on, that allocations are made for the appropriate staff to be there. So, yeah.
Thank you. And I would also encourage you to come before council annually. You know, I think that's important to bring these agricultural perspective to council, to staff, and the public that's watching. Thank you.
Mayor Ellsley.
Thank you. And through you, thanks for coming today and and doing your presentation. One of the things I've always heard when I talk to folks in the agricultural industry is, and I say to them, what would you like us to do? Often I get the answer, leave us alone. We'll tell you when we want to see you, and we'll tell you when you've done something wrong and you need to fix it. So I I've always kind of taken a hands-off approach, but tried to visit and tried to support the ag community in any way I could. Now, am I getting the wrong message there that on the, leave us alone and let us do our thing, and if we need you, we'll call you? How do you feel about that?
Well, I guess we're here today, so. Yeah, no, I, like, I'm, maybe it was misinterpreted. I don't mean that we don't want to engage with you. I just mean that we're a fairly self-sufficient industry. It's just, yeah, we are, like, we have road concerns and all those things too that we heard today. But it's, like, again, to come back to the, like, City Corthal Lakes is in a very good position now. Like, agriculture is currently diverse. We have support industries. We have all those things, but you don't have to go very far, and those things are just appearing. And we're just hoping to highlight how, through this report, how much of an economic driver agriculture is. And that when, you know, you guys see that, and that when you're making decisions, you allocate for that, and and there are, like, we are hearing from some, going back to it, I don't want to belabor it, but some support businesses that are having a hard time. And and some of it's not because of council, but it's just we're raising that concern here.
And through you, Deputy Mayor. Thanks for that. And, you know, I get, I guess one of the things I heard you say is concerns like the Tree Bylaw. My understanding with the Tree Bylaw is it does not apply to agricultural operations, so and I believe that the the way it is now, that is true. And anyway, I I'm encouraged by by your statistics to see the gap widening slightly, ever so slightly between expenses and income, meaning that maybe it's just slightly more lucrative to to farm today. And the old story about the the farmer who won Lotto 649 and was asked what he was going to do with the money and said, well, I'll just keep farming till it's all gone, is maybe not so true anymore. But again, thanks very much for coming today, and I hope you make it at least an annual event.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Again, I'd like to thank you also for that information that you shared with us, and I think we hear you loud and clear. So thank you for coming today. On that note, I'd like to have a motion to receive that the presentation by Paul Buckley and Greg Bacon of the Corthal Lakes Halliburton Federation of Agriculture regarding the agricultural profile update for Peterborough County and Corthal Lakes be received, and that the recommendation be brought forward to council for consideration at the next regular council meeting. Counselor Richardson, Mayor Ellsley, all in favor? Thank you. Next, 6.2, Corthal Lakes Agricultural and Food Action Plan, 2020-2024, a presentation by Kelly Mullany.
Good afternoon, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and thank you, members of council committee, for having me here today. I'm going to be speaking to you about the wrap-up, basically, of our most recent Agriculture and Food Action Plan, which covered the years 2020 to 2024. This is a plan that has a significant amount of work in it. And as our previous speakers mentioned, we have consulted in developing this plan quite extensively at the time and really appreciate the input that the Federation of Agriculture member and members and all of the agricultural associations did in compiling that report. And just to add to my notes, in reference to, and not necessarily to necessarily to speak to their concern, but this plan is one of the pieces that is embedded in our agriculture, in our economic development strategy. And it is noted in our new strategy to update and continue to have an agricultural and food action plan. So next slide, please. Some of the ways that council does support the agriculture and food cluster, as was a term in our previous strategy, is through our Agriculture Development Advisory Committee, through my position as the Agriculture Economic Development Officer. And in this plan, we had 52 actions, which we addressed. And most actions, we can say happily have been completed or are ongoing, and there's very few that we hadn't touched yet, but there is a future. Next slide. The vision in that document was that the city of Corthal Lakes Agriculture and Food Cluster is a leader in the use of science and innovation, collaboration, education, and farm-to-fork excellence. The cluster is continuously improving and contributing to a healthy community, landscape, and environment. And that was the vision for 2024. So I think we did quite well. Next slide. There were five objectives in the plan, and I'm going to review them more closely as we go through, next slide, the 11 goals. So it's not a wonder we had 52 actions. And so with the first goal on the next slide, it is to ensure that Corthal Lakes maintains a supportive business environment. Agribusinesses can, where agribusinesses can expand and thrive. And just briefly, we had 10 identified actions that we addressed within there. And there was the day-to-day piloting services that I offer to businesses when they inquire. I'm able to stick handle their issues and point them in the right direction, help them myself or point them to one of my colleagues. And then we had the formal development of our concierge program, which supported businesses in larger developments, and we shared information about funding opportunities. We provide guidance to those businesses in the sector for land use planning, understanding of our bylaws and regulations, and provided information about workshops that we held, but also by others through our newsletter, social media. And some of those were on farm finance or succession planning, as was addressed, bringing young people into the community. In the farm world is often through the next generation. And also agriculture and food businesses are able to tap into the programming of our Corthal Lakes Small Business Center. And so those programs, including grants, are offered through there. Next slide. In Goal Two, we looked to enhance opportunities for value-added agriculture. And that includes holding agritourism workshops and the tourism program, the NAPSA program, to help people develop on-farm experiences. And we enhanced our Corthal Choice Farm Fresh program with a new website, additional social media programming to attract consumers to those farm operations that are selling direct. We also held our Speed Dating Event, which some of you may have heard of, but that's to help connect food producers with the larger food buyers. And that program developed from that phase on to a project which we received provincial funding through the Rural Economic Development Fund to help food producers scale up to wholesale. That program is ongoing right now, and it's going to be involving a pilot project later later this year where we are aggregating and distributing with our project participants. Over 50 participants in that project right now. We also have alignment with our real estate sector and offering workshops on a periodic basis for them to understand our services and programs that can help their sellers and buyers. And certainly, they do a great job in profiling agricultural land available. On the next slide. In Goal Three, we have the Supporting Agriculture and Food Education for students within Corthal Lakes. And many of the programs are offered at at all levels. At the college level, certainly, we have held Skills Development Program training in partnership with, between Fleming College and Victoria County Career Services. That was provincially funded. We have a new agriculture career ladder that was developed by the Workforce Development Board. And women's entrepreneurship training was held. So we also do support connections for co-op and job trial placement with local farms and agribusinesses for our high school programs. Two of our high schools here in Lindsay have agriculture, high skills major programs to help young people look to future careers in agriculture. In Goal Four, that was to help fill the gap between the agri-food labor force and employers' needs for the agriculture and food sector. And again, a lot of this work was in partnership with Victoria County Career Services and Fleming College. But we ran a specific program that did pre-employment training for those that were interested in jobs in the agriculture sector. In Goal Five, we looked to have updated official plan policies and develop the comprehensive zoning bylaws and other municipal policies to support agricultural development. And so you're certainly aware of our Agriculture Advisory Committee's involvement and others where we ran information workshops on the more recent provincial policy statements and the policies that apply to agriculture, so that members of the sector could participate in the consultations. And helped in that Rural Zoning Bylaw project, we were able to have some of the new concepts included with the on-farm diversified uses and supporting value-added agriculture and agritourism. And this is one of the items that we'll look to the future when the official plan updates are completed, that will continue that that work. And under this goal as well, I actively participate in the review of planning applications that come forward to Planning Committee and provide comments there. In Goal Six, that is to improve local infrastructure. So we heard about the VIP Agricultural Tour, and one of the the pieces that we did include there in one of our most recent tours was to have a up-close look at the drainage system and the collaboration that we have with our Drainage Superintendent to help members of council and staff to to see how they they operate. Certainly, council support for natural gas expansion, expansion of broadband and cellular coverage, bridge and road reconstruction projects. All address this need for agriculture, as was mentioned in the previous presentation, for the infrastructure that supports the business that is done. And on to Goal Seven, we had a recommendation to enact tax policies that support the agriculture development. And one of the previous delegations by the Corthal Federation of Agriculture was specifically on that, to address their request for farm tax ratio support. And we do continue to have the the reductions tax, tax rate for agricultural land at the residential rate. So that was supported. And on to Goal Eight, that is to streamline the planning and building application processes for agribusinesses in Corthal Lakes. And the Rural Zoning Bylaw actually helped to do some of that by clarifying some and modernizing some of the definitions and provided some as-of-right opportunities that when enforced, the, will be able to support the agriculture businesses in Corthal Lakes. The pre-consultation process also assists businesses in being able to get clear feedback from their their building and development plans. And I think this is going back to maybe very early in the the plan time, but we had the site alteration bylaw developed at that time. And also in this area, we looked to that new Municipal Farm 911 program to help emergency services in finding the properties. And it has a a clear and simple application process for it. So into Goal Nine, we are looking to empower the Corthal Lakes Business Community to promote agriculture and food. And so many of the advancements in that awareness was by stronger connections with our tourism colleagues and the the tourism website, expanding upon some of the information provided about agriculture experiences. The agriculture sector was included in the Welcome Home and the Ambassador Programs that were developed by our Economic Development Officer in Business. The active area, active farming area signage also helped those who are passing through our community to recognize that they were working or traveling on roads that would be possibly encountering far, far equipment on the way. One piece that was identified here that we will look to the future when our wholesale project is completed, it was mentioned that we should consider engaging in the development of a food procurement policy. Many municipalities have taken that step, thus to procure local food if it is available. So we'll look to to including that potentially in a future plan. On Goal Ten, we are, our goal here is to continue to develop strong Corthal Lakes Agriculture and Food Brand. So we have produced addition, more promotional materials promoting our local food brand, Corthal Choice Farm Fresh. We have a strategic plan that we developed for our Corthal Choice Farm Fresh program. And as you're aware, our previous partner in that program, the Peterborough and the Corthal's Economic Development, has wound down, and we are now undertaking the development of our new relationships with our Peterborough County and city of Peterborough colleagues. So more information will come. With the farmers' markets specifically, we helped them to do more marketing and promotion through our Corthal Choice program, but we also provided the market market signage. And during the pandemic, we created or developed a much closer relationship with each of them as they looked to open their markets each year. And they're now operating very independently, but in aligning themselves with their health unit approvals each year. So that was a very positive relationship development. We also do support attraction of businesses. And as was stated, attracting farms is not a direct piece that we work on, but we look to attract processing businesses, specifically more so food processing businesses, and we help to grow the ones that are here by attending the Restaurants Canada Show and the CL Grocery Show. So help them to move beyond our borders as well. And in Goal Eleven, we were looking to strengthen the ability for the agriculture sector to mitigate and adapt to climate change. And most of that work will be done outside of our borders at a provincial or national and and international level, truthfully. But we do monitor and share the results and the achievements that have been gained across the the sector, but and certainly work with our conservation partners on their stewardship activities. And as well, we also host workshops or ensure that they're held in our community. A bright light, though, is that our Planning Division has just recently A bright light, though, is that our Planning Division has just recently hired a staff person to directly address our healthy environment plan. So next steps, in the next four years, we anticipate our new strategy would cover the time period, well, 2025 to 2030, I guess, a five-year strategy once we have it completed. It was included within the 2025 budget to conduct the development of that new plan, and it is in our work plan for this year. So thank you for your time, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Kelly. I'll just open it up for any questions if we have for the, Councilor Warren.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Kelly, for the presentation. I enjoyed reading this, and you hit on, you know, procuring local food. And I'm just wondering if that should be moved up with all the changes that are going on south of the border to make our area more sustainable?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, through the Councilor. Certainly, our awareness, building awareness for the availability of local food in our community is something that we take great interest in, and that program, the Coortha Choice Farm Fresh program, is all about that. One of the key pieces in the project that we're undertaking now with the local food wholesale project, it was involved a training program to help producers scale up to larger volumes. And certainly, there is product available there, and we do encourage people to continue to look locally. So look through that website, coorthachoice.com.
Yeah, and just one other quick question. I recently heard a program on the radio about 12-month agriculture in greenhouses. And do you see that, you know, expanding maybe in Coortha Lakes?
It is a trend that we have seen across Ontario and even locally here that more producers are using greenhouses or small frames to start their produce earlier in the year. We certainly do have year-round production in our livestock and crops, and there are some larger investments happening in the region. One, I got to tour just recently at Curve Lake First Nation, where they're going to be opening an aquaponics facility and have expressed interest in participating in our wholesale project when that comes online. So yes, very exciting developments and opportunities where we can use not only indoor spaces, but can potentially combine them with our growing lands.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. So I'd like to have a motion that the presentation of Kelly Maloney, Economic Development Officer, Agriculture, regarding the Coortha Lakes Agriculture and Food Action Plan 2020-2024 be received, and that this recommendation be brought forward to council for consideration for the regular council meeting. Councilor Joyce, seconded by Councilor Richardson, all in favor? Thank you. Next, again, Kelly, Coortha Lakes Agriculture and Food Action Plan, I guess that's the same, oh, just wait, is that the same? Yeah, it's just the report, so I just need a motion for the report. So I need a motion for the report, ED 2025005, Coortha Lakes Agriculture and Food Action Plan 2020-2024 Report be received, and that this recommendation be brought forward to council for consideration for the next regular council meeting. Councilor Warren, seconded by Councilor Joyce, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. And at this time, I think we're going to take about a 15-minute break, people can go stretch or whatever, so we'll see everybody back here at 20, 3:25, how's that? Okay, thanks.
Ready, I can call the meeting back to order. And we're going to start with six point three, two thousand and twenty four International Plowing Match and the Rural Expo Municipality Summary Report, presentation by Kelly Maloney.
Good afternoon, I am not Kelly Maloney, but I'm taking the opportunity to jump in beforehand because this was a wonderful community event and community celebration. And Kelly has been very good at saying thank you to everybody that participated. So I wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of my team and staff to say thank you to Kelly for leading the staff response to this event and coordinating all of us through this. So thank you, Kelly.
Thanks Rebecca.
Thank you so much Rebecca. And yes, I am here to today to provide our municipal wrap up for the event named formally, the twenty twenty four International Plowing Match and Rural Expo, or affectionately to all of us, the IPM. Next slide. The International Plowing Match, or IPM, is an event that's held annually across different counties in Ontario. The Ontario Ploughman's Association is the lead organization, or the OPA, and they host it in partnership with an organization that is typically formed each year of local volunteers in the area that they hold the event. And in twenty nineteen, Coortle Lakes was identified as the host for twenty twenty, and the pandemic changed all of those plans, so it was postponed to twenty twenty four, with the dates being October first to fifth. The main exhibition portion of the event is called Tented City, and that was held at the Lindsay Fairgrounds with parking and plowing in the fields around on Angeline Street and on County Road or Coortle Lakes Road thirty six. To the next slide, we'll go two slides maybe. There we go. So the event attracted over fifty one thousand attendees, volunteers, competitors, and exhibitors. And Coortle Lakes contributed in two main ways. One was the in-kind event support and delivery, well, the second delivery was of the municipal display, Coortle Lakes, showcase Coortle Lakes. So the staff supported the OPA in their plans and execution of the twenty twenty four IPM. And councillor, sorry, Deputy Mayor McDonald was council's representative on the IPM Local Committee, as well councillor Ashmore was also a director on the IPM Local Committee. And I believe that I could easily say, and we'll see in the slides to come, that the long-lasting reputation of the city of Coortle Lakes as a host municipality is a very positive one. On to the next slide. The OPA and the twenty twenty four IPM Local Committee were here and made a presentation to Committee of the Whole in twenty, two thousand and twenty three with a request for in-kind municipal support and a startup loan. They were given a loan of thirty five thousand dollars in August of twenty three to help them prepare for the preceding event in Dufferin in twenty twenty three. And they have just recently repaid that loan. The role of myself, I was appointed as a staff liaison between the organizing committees. And as well, in that role, I made several connections with various staff, members of council, and facilitated meetings where the in-kind support was requested. And told, all untold, that involved thirteen division managers and their staff. On the next slide. On in-kind requests, I've mentioned the staff liaison. We'll have a look at each of the requests just at high level. In addition to that connection support, there was a request for, through our bus transportation at Lindsay Transit to have a stop at the Lindsay Fairgrounds. And also, they provided a shuttle to the plowing grounds from the tented city. For building permits for tents and bleachers, there was a request for waiving of the fees. And what we actually have here in Coortle Lakes was the ability for large events like this to be permitted under one single event. Where it is a tented city, there are many large tents. And so this definitely assists in not only the IPM, but other large events to have one single permit for all of those applications. The request for field entrance upgrades, often when this event is held in a farm field, there are many entry points to those fields that need to be upgraded. In our situation here in Coortle Lakes, there was only one upgrade required, and that was at the entrance of the RV park. For transient traders, we already have an exemption for not-for-profit organizations. And one of the bright lights, I think, was in the area of refreshment vehicle licensing. The fees were waived by the manager of municipal law enforcement and licensing, but there was a temporary license required, and it was an educational process, I think, for all involved, and something that they will carry on with in future years to ensure that they're inspected and safe for the public and the operators. We had good support with our communications teams, providing public notices, invitations to participate, and that was through social media, newsletters, and much more. On the next slide. Some of the largest requests were in the area of emergency services. So our fire services reviewed and updated the emergency management plan and did fire prevention inspection. Our paramedic services developed and updated, adapted previously used emergency health plans from former IPMs, and also were significant presence on site with their services. The Coortle Lakes Police Services provided paid duty traffic control on Angeline Street South, and the Coortle Lakes Detachment of OPP did paid duty on Highway seven at Two Points. There was a development of a transportation management plan for the MTO along the Highway seven thirty five corridors. And staff in all of our emergency services participated, as well as our Lindsay Roads operations. We all worked together to develop that plan for the MTO. And also, a signage plan had to be developed for both MTO and municipal roads. And the MTO contractor provided installation on the provincial highways, and our local roads team provided installation on municipal roads. On to the next slide. So sponsorship request was also made, and that was for the Celebration of Excellence, where thirty five thousand dollars in sponsorship was provided. And that banquet not only acknowledged the winners of the plowing competition, but also crowned the new Ontario Queen of the Furrow. And it was an evening event that was attended by the mayor and members of council. On to the next slide. The showcase of Coortle Lakes, it gave attendees a sense of what Coortle Lakes was all about from a community, business, social, and environmental perspective. It represented the city's brand of opportunity, community, and naturally, and also hit the strategic priorities of healthy environment, exceptional quality of life, and a vibrant and growing economy. Multiple community partners and businesses, not-for-profit organizations, and individuals were engaged by the city through our economic development team to bring the showcase to life with visual displays, interactive activities, entertainment, food sampling, and other experiences. Next slide. The core planning team for the showcase included the economic development team, communication staff, and our partners from Coortle Region Conservation. The central feature you can see there being built was representing a lake, a wetland, a waterway, and a beach, all in one. And to give perspective to each aspect of changing environment surrounding the water feature, significant donations by our two local tree suppliers, Pine Needle Farm and Rockwood Forest Nursery, provided approximately thirty thousand dollars' worth of trees on loan to create various landscapes that would help people to get the feel of changing from one aspect of the building to the other. It really did help create a wow factor with trees and the water feature. We couldn't have pulled it all together without the key involvement and installation and removal of the landscaping by our cohorts in the Parks and Rec team, as well as by the public work staff in helping to cart away the materials at the end of the event. On to the next. And actually, I should note, I think I was right in the middle of that when I last visited you in September. It was right before the event. So that sure brings back lots of memories. The central water feature, visual displays, and interactive activities were all on offer at the event. It really was a welcoming space that involved one hundred and thirty volunteers, staff, and organization members. The connected pathways around the exhibit gave a look into the various vignettes that we'll look at in a minute here. That layout design, support was provided to have the design done by the Rural Tourism Organization Eight, RTO eight. And our areas that we had included, not only the wet areas with the water, but also we had forest, culture and heritage, manufacturing, innovation, and business zone, Main Street, and the agricultural area. You'll see in some of those pictures, the wall hangings and unified signage that we use to connect it all together, along with the flooring with mulch and shavings. On to the next. The vignettes included so many, hard to mention, but a welcoming desk where the volunteers greeted people on entry, gave them the new Coortle Lakes stickers, a bag or phone case. They went through the Gallery of Agriculture where they could see, a look into barn images. The plumbing simulator was there for agriculture equipment, and people could try how to drive tractor and load bales. Bee City and Bird Friendly were represented. We had a brand-new Osprey carving on site to be able to feature our new bird from the Bird Friendly program. Fire prevention was there with barn fire prevention. We had alternate watering on display with fencing. The beach area had canoe and sand toys. Source Water Protection had information about construction erosion controls. And the Tree Cookie provided a look into our history of Coortle Lakes with various events marked in time. And recreation, we had a bicycle on display with the trail maps and whatnot. On to the next slide. Quarter Choice Farm Fresh was represented with our food sampling. On the entertainment stage, we had local musicians and guest speakers throughout the week, with morning and afternoon having a new face on the stage. Our Heritage Team created twelve panels showing the various history features, including history of agriculture and textiles. There was a signature quilt, which hopefully many of you had an opportunity to sign your name to, which is being wrapped up and quilted out by our Heritage Team. The educational displays provided information on an urban rain garden or tree garden, trails of knowledge about animal tracks. Our Arts and Culture Team coordinated with the Coortle Arts Network to do an art off, where the theme of painting was given and the artist was there on site painting for people to watch. We had an augmented reality sandbox to show weather impacts on the landscape and citizen science to monitor the health of the lakes. On the next slide. Our Waste Team was there to promote the new organics collection and waste diversion. Ampere and Make Stuff Move were there with their remote control robots and STEM building kits. And our manufacturing display was put together by our business officer showed items that were made in Coortle Lakes. Our Small Business Center was on site to begin the conversations of those businesses trying to grow and enter our community. Our tourism survey conducted at the entrance, it reached four hundred and fifty five attendees that provided their feedback, and we learned that thirty one percent of them were from the local area, and ninety seven percent of those who attended were from here in Canada. Forty two percent of the visitors stayed overnight, and they averaged five night stays. So I believe that visitors left with a sense of what Coortle Lakes offers for their visit and an invitation to return. Next slide. It really was an inviting space where visitors had multisensory experience and many vignettes throughout the space. Amongst the thirty organizations and businesses that participated, that included our five chambers of commerce and the BIA, each and every, including all the departments that participated in the display, had the opportunity to develop new marketing materials, displays, and refresh our attraction materials. But the real strength is the key to it, and that is collaboration, building relationships. We came together to show off our community, and we did it well. We also had a slogan that we approach it as a fiscally responsible wow. So throughout all of those vignettes that we just looked at, we took the approach to beg, borrow, and steal as much as we could, and were, I believe, successful in trying to keep the cost down. Next slide. So this motto, where possible, we borrowed, but we also involved many of our colleagues in the programming. And many of the pieces that went into this fit into operating budgets where possible. We engaged all of the departments that had interest in speaking to our local attendees and the visitors. And the departments that we engaged, not only in the showcase, but also in the in-kind support, involved our police, fire, paramedics, roads, water, wastewater, solid waste, Lindsay Transit, municipal law enforcement and licensing, building and septic, fire prevention, parks, communications, and economic development. There was a capital project which was established in twenty twenty through the budget process, and it was used to capture the expenses that did not fit into the routine operations budgets by the departments. And that is where we captured one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of expense. And that was a share between the in-kind support, some of the showcase support in delivering the showcase Coortle Lakes, and the sponsorship. And I believe that you have already, as council, passed the Q four capital close, the close of that special project. The next slide. There are two motions on the report today to seek relief from a couple of the fees that were waived for, related to the in-kind support, and that is the water and sewer bill and the tipping fees for the septicage that was delivered from the event. And so we'll see those motions at the time of the report. Next slide. In legacy, I believe that we were able to reach over fifty thousand attendees with a beautiful, natural representation of our community. We had clear messaging, engaging activities, and a welcoming spirit of hospitality which encouraged everyone to explore Coortle Lakes. The municipality was recognized by the IPM organizers as being responsive, helpful, and a pleasure to work with in supporting the event. Members of the Coortle Lakes community have a significant pride of place and were keen to support the showcase in showing off their community assets through their business or organization, staff, as staff or volunteers. The municipality has developed and enhanced many, many relationships across the community which will enable more collaborations in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. I'll open it up for questions. Mayor Emily?
Thanks, Kelly, for the presentation, and thanks for everybody who was involved with the plowing match. I think it was a huge success for our municipality and all of staff and everyone else who participated. I think they did a great job. And, you know, whoever comes next, I think it's Lincoln, or they're going to have a tough job to even approach what was done here. I wanted to ask you about the property that the plowing took place on. Should we say something to recognize that it was donated at that time for the plowing match and recognize? for the plowing match and recognize the corporation that allowed us to use their land?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to our mayor. Yes, there was a significant involvement by the whole community in putting this event together. And today's presentation really was our municipal wrap-up report. Most certainly, there were many individuals and businesses that stepped up to provide all that was needed for the event. Very, well, those who are here in the room today can see the poster that was used by the IPM this year, and that is a representation of Mr. Finney, who was the former owner of the property and also a plowman himself. So it was very significant that they were able to use his property for the plowing lands, and that was a donation, I understand, by Bromant Homes. And so I know that the committee and the organizing team really do appreciate that. I don't think that I represent them, but I will speak today. I guess on their behalf, I know that they're in the process of wrapping up their own event and hope to have some wrap-up more formally in the days and weeks to come. And I think that they did a wonderful job and I was really, really happy. I couldn't put it in my notes, but very happy to have led our team in supporting that event. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. I have a comment to make, and this is you, Kelly. We spent a lot of time together during that time, and I just want to thank you for all your support. What you did was just over the top. There was a lot of work being done behind closed doors that people don't really understand that was done, and a lot of it was MTO and signage and so on that we worked at the last minute to get it done. And if it wasn't for you, we wouldn't have got it done. So that's what people don't see of what wouldn't have got done unless you did it. So thanks again for that. And the other part of it is that I have never been involved with so many volunteers that were so engaged and so happy to be there that, you know, and you met so many people in just the area that I took after. It was just incredible, like thousands of volunteers and, you know, it just shows you what our community is all about. And we did a great job and, you know, we'll remember for that. But if they're asking for help, I think I'm busy that week for, okay, when it goes to the next spot. But thanks again, Kelly, and we really appreciate everything you do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, I'd like to have a motion that the presentation by Kelly Maloney, Economic Development Officer, regarding the 2024 International Plowing Match and Rural Expo Municipality Summary Report be received and the recommendation be brought forward to council for consideration for the next regular council meeting. Counselor Joyce, Second Counselor Richardson, all in favor? Thank you. And also a motion that the report of ED 2025-004, 2024 International Plowing Match and Rural Expo Municipality Summary Report be received and that the following fees charged per bylaw 2018-234, being a bylaw to establish and require payment of fees for this information, services, activities and uses of the city property in the city of Korthal Lakes, known as the Consolidated Fees Bylaw related to the International Plowing Match and the Rural Expo be waived. $432.25 for water and wastewater consumption per bylaw 2021-162, being a bylaw to regulate water and wastewater services in the city Korthal Lakes, and $1,235.25 charged for waste removal and $187.96 charged for the septic removal per bylaw 2024-235, and a bylaw for the collection of management and waste and recyclables within the city of Korthal Lakes. And that this recommendation be brought forward to council consideration at the next council meeting. The mayor, Almsmay, Second, Emmett Yeo, Counselor Yeo, all in favor? Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Korthal Lakes Fire Rescue Service 2024 Annual Report Presentation. Unfortunately, as we know, Chief Jones was unable to attend, but the presentation was given here to council and we all know where he is and what he's doing. So at this time, I'd just like to make a motion that the presentation of Terry Jones, Fire Chief, regarding the Korthal Lakes Fire Rescue Service 2024 Annual Report be received and the recommendations be brought forward to council for consideration at the next regular council meeting. Counselor Richardson, Second, the mayor, all in favor? Thank you. And also I'd like to have a motion that the report of the Korthal Lakes Fire Rescue Service Annual Report be received and this recommendation be brought forward to council for consideration in the next council meeting. Counselor Warren, Second Counselor Perry, all in favor? Thank you. Moving on to 6.5, the encampment response update presentation. Mr. Taylor, CEO.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, I'll just be providing some introduction and a little bit of scope from where we've come from and where we are now and where we're heading. And I'm joined by Director Faber as well as the Housing Manager, Michelle Corley, and they're going to walk you through various information and items with regard to our encampment response update. And so again, I'll just say thank you, Chair, and to the mayor and members of council. You'll remember back in September, on the 10th of 2024, same group with some extended members of our team presented early insights into the city's draft encampment protocol. And after several months since then of implementing that draft structure, we're happy to be here today to provide you with an update. Our objective remains focused on balancing our roles related to ensuring public health and safety, human rights and applying our municipal bylaws that relate to utilization of our property, of our parks, open spaces, our roadways, et cetera. But above all, residents living unsheltered. It's our goal that that doesn't occur. It's a lofty goal, but it's a goal that we're up to the challenge for. And certainly where they are unsheltered, we want it to be an experience that is as short as possible and supported. And I mentioned I'm joined by the director and the manager. They're going to take you through the update. It's aligned with the associated staff report. So for those that are following along on the meeting, there is an extensive staff report in the agenda which outlines a recommended encampment response council policy that we're putting forward for your consideration. So that is the policy that will set out the philosophy and the framework of our approach and our program. And then there is also associated with that, an extensive and expanded draft encampment outreach and response protocol, which practically speaking is a internal, like a corporate management directive or policy that will guide our program work overall. And so if we'll go to the next slide, and I'm going to turn it over to the director. Go ahead.
Okay, good afternoon. Actually, I'm going to just start. Given the personal experiences that many residents have experienced over the last 11 days, as well as each of us personally, it's very, it's interesting that we bring this to you. Many of us have experienced no heat, no water, no flush toilets, securing or storing or preparing food, the basic needs of life over the last 11 days. So we bring this forward to council today with some compassion and some empathy, I think that we've all experienced. So today and through the staff report, as well as the presentation, we'll walk you through the work that the city's encampment response leadership team and the working group has crafted and prepared to bring back to council. As Ron said, we heard you and staff have taken the time to monitor and review the encampment data. We've learned and made improvements through execution on that draft protocol. We've listened to and had conversations on better integrated management and response for encampments. This generative and applied learning has enabled staff to bring the council policy and the draft encampment outreach and response protocol to you today. As we know, encampments represent the physical visibility of homelessness in our community, which is a housing problem. The report and the corresponding documents outline how staff recommend addressing and planning effectively for the influx of homelessness on the short term, while at the same time, staff are planning for housing solutions for the long term. The long term will provide a strategy to focus investment and development to make an impact to the outflow of homelessness. Next slide. So again, the learnings that we've taken away, as you see in the protocol, it includes a response framework with guidelines regarding encampment location, etiquette, customer service standards, decision-making and dispute resolution and compliance and enforcement. So through the applied learning, best practices in the sector, community input and engagement, as well as litigation decisions, staff have gained valuable insights and incorporated these into the draft protocol. So for instance, learnings were heard and experienced about the importance of the need for additional public education. It has been key for citizens, neighbors, business owners and community members to share their perspectives and work with our teams, while at the same time, they've garnered a better understanding of the housing need, the basic needs of these individuals and to encourage empathy for broader community support. Those living unsheltered were recently interviewed, and many of them said they do fear their own safety living in encampments and they do want police presence and support, with the majority also saying that encampments should not be located next to a playground and over half said that they should not be near a school. A public survey as well, in January, that concluded recently, we had 241 respondents, and they stated that 66% actually believe that homelessness has gotten much worse over the last three years. So we heard that earlier today. The pandemic has impacted many things and certainly this is one of them. There was over 67% of our public respondents feel that it's extremely important for the city to take action over the concerns about the visibility of homelessness and the lack of affordable housing that will push more people into a crisis. The Korthal Lakes Police Services shared insights related to ensuring a balanced perspective on safety concerns. They noted that many concerns from neighbors and citizens originate from a place of fear, discomfort and stigma. The Community Response Unit works to actively provide education and information to mitigate these concerns and dispel that information. The KLPS input suggested that reducing stigma and promoting understanding through community education is needed in the city's overall encampment response strategy. And lastly, staff spoke to our city's insurer and our solicitor. It was confirmed that there is no concrete guidance. However, municipalities must balance between maintaining the safety of our public, providing, upholding the responsibility for human rights and providing bylaws for enforcement. So it's a balancing act between those three. Of note, you'll notice the six letters of support attached to the report also speak for themselves, based on their support for the city's direction related to encampment response and longer-term housing solutions. Next slide. So this slide visually captures the governing and supporting structure, that which supports city's encampment response and how it's localized and executed here in Korthal Lakes, as Ron's already talked about. It demonstrates how federal and provincial legislation, as well as evidence and litigation, has informed best practices, all of which have shaped the encampment response council policy. The encampment outreach and response protocol will act as the city's management directive to direct city staff on how to operationalize the council policy, all of which are supported through appropriate standard operating procedures that guide the encampment response leadership team and our working group. This is clearly articulated in the proposed council policy appended to the report. And again, this isn't a standalone protocol. It will be supported and integrated with other, with various other council, city council policies, including that of the recent Customer Experience Commitment Council Policy that Brendan Clark shared with you at the last meeting. And now I will hand it over to Michelle to take you through the meat of the policy.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Cheryl and Ron, so far. So we'll move to the next slide, please. Thank you. Unsheltered homelessness, as you can see, continues to fluctuate seasonally in Korthal Lakes and the county of Halliburton. Additionally, those who experience unsheltered homelessness are often transient in nature, not necessarily staying outside in the same place each night. Our team continues to build and refine our database that's used in monitoring encampments, including those who are known to be regularly experiencing unsheltered homelessness. So a lot of work happening behind the scenes every day right now in our team to really manage how we're tracking this and we are learning as we go. There's a lot to uncover as homelessness continues to change and evolve. In October 2024, we saw the greatest number of those experiencing homelessness, experiencing stories specifically unsheltered homelessness. In October, we were aware of 69 individuals staying outside at 52 different locations on both private and public lands. A few of those within that group do, were represented and located in the county of Halliburton, but most certainly were in Korthal Lakes. Later in the presentation, we'll further discuss some of the resources that became available over the winter to help provide additional temporary shelter to folks. We'll move to the next slide. So effective December 1st, 2024, and you may recall a city news release on this, the city amended the Emergency Shelter Service Agreement with a place called Home to permanently increase shelter capacity from 19 to 30 beds. This extra capacity was achieved through adding additional beds to some of the existing shelter rooms in the new rebuilt shelter. Last year involved significant collaboration between the city and a place called Home. A place called Home onboarded a new executive director along with all the negotiation work that happened with us and a place called Home entering into an updated Emergency Shelter Service Agreement. That expanded Emergency Shelter Service Agreement included significant clarification of service scope, which also progressed, which also made sure that we ensured that the shelter operations are closely aligning and supporting the city's role in homelessness. Don't forget that just a couple of years ago, the city's role in homelessness was simply funding the emergency shelter. Now we have an entire team, so it was an important time for us to renegotiate that shelter to align our work. In addition to the emergency shelter overnight accommodation, the agreement was also updated to further expand the shelter service to allow 24/7 drop-in service to those who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness who currently can't access the shelter because the shelter's at capacity. That drop-in service provides the availability of a daily meal along with washroom and shower and laundry use for those who are outside. The new contract also allows the city's outreach team to work closely with a place called Home, ensuring that those in encampments are prioritized into shelter when space does become available. Much like the last few winters, the city once again contracted with a place called Home to provide even further shelter capacity over the winter. The Out of the Cold Program, as we call it, supports those who need shelter during significant weather events or when temperatures reach minus 10 with additional shelter capacity obtained through the use of accessing local motels. Between December 1st and March 15th, 49 unique individuals have been served through this program for this winter. Additionally, the city's outreach team also supported 10 individuals in motels over the winter and supported them with intensive case management, which has resulted in nearly everyone finding long-term housing. Next slide. Over the course of the last few months, clearer guidelines have been established to support the encampment response process. There is now a webpage on the website, the city's website, regarding the encampment response and includes a link to an online encampment reporting form. When the Human Services Department receives these encampment reports, either from the public or other city staff, outreach staff will... public or other city staff, outreach staff will attend the site within three business days. To ensure clear messaging on our response to encampments, we have categorized the different stages of our response into four phases, as you'll see on the slide. Phase one represents the initial report of an encampment, followed by phase two, which includes the initial response of our outreach team and communication with other city staff who are part of the encampment working group. Phase three represents the period of time that ongoing engagement and support occurs with those staying in encampments. This work includes a minimum twice-weekly onsite visit by the outreach team, along with other opportunities for supports that occur at either drop-in outreach locations nearby or specific support referrals with other partners. While wellness supports are underway in this process and this phase, the outreach team is also actively supporting the individual with a housing plan. A housing plan may include supporting someone into shelter when space is available, or supporting them into exploring other indoor options. Given the lack of affordable housing, the length of time spent in this phase is really difficult to predict. The protocol does include standards and expectations that the encampment stayer must be actively engaging with staff on their housing plans, and that failure to engage may result in enforcement. Given that the goal of the encampment protocol, as we have already heard, is to support someone in finding shelter or housing that meets their specific needs, phase four represents that final step and goal, which is the execution of the protocol resulting in the relocation of the encampment stayer into shelter or housing and clearing of the encampment site. Next slide. The protocol response can also move into other phases when necessary to address a concern. These other phases include a compliance phase, where we seek voluntary compliance to correct a concern, as well as an enforcement phase. Should a serious matter be present, and depending on the severity of that concern, we can directly implement enforcement to evict someone from an encampment site. Upon inquiry, we can share the active encampment response phase with members of the public, including council members. What we can't do is disclose any personal information related to our work with those staying in encampments. The Encampment Response webpage will soon be updated to include a summary of these different phases, so that when we are talking to members of the public, they can see that additional reference for themselves. Next slide. In order to support that balanced approach that we've talked about already, we have included a framework within the protocol that outlines where encampments can and cannot be permitted. I will further emphasize that it is not our desire to see any of our residents have to experience unsheltered homelessness. Given feedback from various stakeholders, the protocol outlines a list of locations where it is not safe for encampments to be located, while also providing some parameters of where encampments can have a temporary presence. Even where encampments can temporarily be permitted, they must not directly interfere with essential public services, which will also involve ensuring that the density of the individual encampments are managed to prevent disruption of public use. When assessing prohibited and non-prohibited locations, we must consider key considerations, such as the proximity to services and access to basic needs. And I will turn it back over to the CIO.
So, Mr. Chair, in conclusion, you are hearing, safety is a top concern, and it's a top concern for both residents and those that are staying in encampments. And we will continue to closely monitor sites and appropriately respond when necessary. We will also work closely with our policing and enforcement partners to understand their perspectives and approach taken in investigating these concerns. Encampment stayers themselves have shared with us that they don't want to be in serious harm's way or in unsafe circumstances or sites. So while rounding out feedback on these documents that we're bringing forward to you, we will be finalizing and looking to approve, at the end of the month, the overall -- sorry, response protocol. Along with that implementation of the protocol, another key priority for this year is going to be working with the clearly defined and updated, and it was mentioned by the manager, the customer service standards. So council in that policy had a commitment that we would then start to develop other KPIs, other commitments, and other standards in specific program areas that the city is implementing, and this is an area of no exception. So we will be developing those as a way to report and further track our success moving forward. We're going to find ways to improve access to the basic needs, it was mentioned, for those in encampments, by ensuring access to drop-in services and other accessible amenities. We'll continue to build the trusting relationship that our staff and our response teams have honestly accomplished over a very short period of time. Unscripted, Deputy Mayor, but my observation, after the feedback and initial from September, you would have heard us making a commitment that we were going to learn by doing, we were going to track and learn and adjust as we could. I got to say, I was absolutely inspired and blown away by how not just that response team came together. I was invited to a meeting with the extended group, all of the enforcement agencies, all of the department supports, all of the human services supports, and they were poring over, I think it was meeting 10 for them, but I was just blown away by the information, the dedication, the mobilization, and the sharing of information in a short period of time. And I hope you would agree that the protocol that we put forward today reflects certainly that learning, and that, again, balancing act that I think the director mentioned, which is, you know, wanting to have boundaries and enforcement, but at the same time, having a human rights and a human approach overall to encampments. Finally, we're going to continue to work, find ways to educate the community as well. We heard it loud and clear, we need that communication with affected residents, with the community at large, and we'd said it before, and we'll continue to commit to that ongoing as our teams do their respective work. If we go to the next slide, we're talking, we're focused almost solely on encampments and protocol there, but I did want to make a connection that also equally important and progressing quite substantively is our update to our 10-year Housing and Homelessness Plan. We're taking an approach to bring together the learning and the continuum of housing that we're trying to provide and supply locally. So these documents, this work, is coming together substantially. We will be bringing forward to you later this year, an update to that plan. You're seeing some of the stats that are coming from it in terms of what it's projected over a 10-year period, and certainly if we do nothing, numbers are going to rise naturally over the next 10 years, we know that. To what extent we're able to flatten that curve is really what work is being done right now. So there will be other recommendations that are brought forward to you in the fall. I think the other important thing with this, as well as the encampment protocol, these were commitments in this term of council that we made explicitly in the city's strategic plan, certainly to provide an exceptional quality of life. And in particular, in that plan, we are committed to increasing affordable and attainable housing and to providing formal programs for homelessness prevention and supports. And so we are well on our way to making that commitment, and it's not just a handful of us, it's everybody in this room, and certainly beyond and in the community. And so with that, I'll just go to the final slide, and we're certainly open to answer any questions that you might have. I do want to, again, just commend the team for the work, even the feedback that we've been getting from community members, it's been very constructive, it's been very informative in shaping how we respond. And again, I said before, I was just blown away by the response and the responsiveness, is maybe a great word, for the internal team and by extension, all of the groups that are connected to it. So I think they should be commended as well. Again, it goes throughout this entire community, those agencies that we support. So thank you for the time, Deputy Mayor and Mayor and Council, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thank you to Director Cheryl Faber and Manager Michelle Corley. So looks like we have a couple of questions, so, Mr. Perry.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, and thank you for the presentation today. It's really wonderful to see all the work that's been done, how this has really been, you know, built out over the past several months, as you say, with, by the looks of it, very broad consultations. I guess my question that I would have is for you, CIO Taylor. The agencies, departments, organizations, people living in shelters have had input, and now it's at council. What's the process moving forward for councilor input, as of, you know, moving forward from today?
Through you, Chair. So there's going to be a number and consistent entry points for feedback. And maybe I should just reiterate, what's in front of council, or what will be in front of council in two weeks, is a recommended policy. And it's essentially, that in my mind, is the important council policy that provides the philosophy, the approach, the framework, that we should be sort of fundamentally working within on our encampment response and management. So that policy will come forward in two weeks. I'm hoping that it captured certainly the feedback we had at previous council sessions, but I think more importantly, again, and you mentioned it well, Counselor Perry, that sort of fanning out of all of the various feedback. One I will say that we rounded out as well was from residents. So we were not shying away from things or complaints that we heard from residents that were impacted by encampments either. And so that really rounded out, I think, a good understanding of where we wanted to go. So that's really just the baseline framework. The second more important, maybe, or important document is the protocol. Your policy would direct us to maintain a protocol under that same philosophy, if you are accepting of that. And then we would work through, that protocol can be updated, it can be adjusted, and in fact, it will be, I can guarantee that, based on our approaches, based on the individual learning over any given cycle. So council is always, has the ability to inform that broader protocol document as well. But I would suggest that, again, unless you're feeling that there isn't sort of ample opportunity to do that, we will certainly sit down with you in the next two weeks and pour over very, very focused on any issues, any hesitations that you might have, or maybe clarifications is a better word. And the hope would still be that the policy could be adopted, so that we can at least program for this coming year with a set philosophy.
Sure.
If I can add, Deputy Mayor, through you to Counselor Perry, as well to be noted that the February Joint Advisory Committee for Housing and Social Services also received the draft protocol, and was discussed between Halliburton council members and our local CKL council members too. So it was brought forward as draft, and we also received support to bring that forward to council today as well. So that should be noted.
I thank you for that, and I do recall being at the meeting and the protocol and the plan being on the agenda, so thanks for that. I think, CIO Taylor, you hit on my concern, you know, at the very end of your remarks, in that this was received or posted for us on Friday, you know, the weather's getting nicer, it's April already, we've had a nice storm. I myself have not had a great opportunity to review it in the detail I would like, given this mass importance that I attach, and I know we all do, to this policy. So, again, I'm just curious, I have some kudos, some questions, some clarifications, and some concerns, and I'm wondering how, as a councilor, within the next two weeks, I would be able to put those forward for consideration, short of having to do line-by-line amendments to the documents we've received at the council table. Thank you.
So I think it was a question at the end, so I'll just say respectfully through the chair, then, again, we'll make ourselves available, however that looks like, to you and any other member of council. If you want to meet in person, just pose questions that we can maybe clarify in advance. Again, my recommendation still would be, there's always going to be room for adjustments and improvement. You rightfully said that the season is approaching, it's essentially here where we need to start programming in the 2025 mode. There is a demand from the public for open information on this, as I know you're very aware. So again, subject to fundamental changes to any of the documents, my recommendation would be for council to approve a policy. We still would approve a protocol in place. We're going to start our programming, we have to, but we're always going to adjust it sort of down the line, and we're even open to bringing back formal amendments when we need to in the coming months, for sure.
Okay, thanks for that.
Any other questions out there that anybody would like to ask? Okay, seeing none. So I'd like to have a motion that the presentation by Ron Taylor, Chief Administrator Officer, Cheryl Faber, Director of Human Services, and Michelle Corley, Human Services Manager, regarding the encampments' response update be received, and that this recommendation be brought forward to council for consideration for the next regular council meeting. Okay, everybody's up there, so Counselor Richardson, Counselor Perry, all in favor? Thank you. And also that a motion to that the report HS2025003, Encampments Response Update and Proposed Council Policy be received, and the policy entitled Encampment Response Policy attached as Appendix A to Report HS2025-003 be adopted and numbered for inclusion in the city policy manual, and that this recommendation be brought forward to council, consideration for the next regular council meeting. Counselor, yes, Mayor Ellsley, second. Counselor Joyce, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is seven, is Consent Matters, and I need a motion, because I need a motion that all the proposed recommendations shown in Section 7.1 of the agenda be approved by the Committee of the Whole in order that appears on the agenda, suspensively numbered and forwarded to council for consideration for the next council meeting. Anybody? Okay, there we go. Counselor Richardson, second, Counselor Perry, all in favor? And that leaves us, I don't see any other business, and we'll leave to 8.1, a memorandum regarding Ontario Digital Public Library. Counselor Joyce.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I want to move it as written, but just a very quick comment to this. Province of Ontario has contributed a grant of roughly $175,000 to our Ontario library system. That $175,000 was the contribution in 1997? 98? 97?
97.
1997. It's still $175,000 today. I did some quick math, it's roughly, with inflationary pressures, it's roughly 45% less in today's dollars versus 1997. The rest of the libraries, you know, our system lands on the municipality. Anyways, this memorandum on the Ontario Digital Public Library should be, I believe, adopted by the Province of Ontario, because it's a good way for them to provide extra support to our library systems across the province. We don't have an exact number, but should they adopt-- We don't have an exact number, but should they adopt this, it will save us with a lot of software licenses and whatnot for accessing this digital library in the tune of $25,000 to $50,000 in expenses. And then that's, and extrapolate that across libraries across Ontario. So we're hoping the province does adopt this, and this is, this memorandum, this letter to the province should help pave the way.
Thank you. Any questions for councillor Joyce? Seeing none. I'd like to have a motion, I'd like to have a motion that the memorandum from councillor Joyce regarding the Ontario Digital Public Library be received, and that the city of Coortle Lakes encourage the province of Ontario to support the creation of an Ontario Digital Public Library in the line with the recommendations of the Ontario Federation of Public Libraries, that a copy of this recommendation is generally outlined in the draft letter attached in this memorandum be forwarded to the Premier of Ontario, the Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Gaming, the MPP for Halliburton Coortle Lakes Brock, the Executive Director of Ontario Federation of Public Libraries, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, and that this recommendation be forwarded to council for consideration at the next regular council meeting. And we have the motion, we have a second. Oh, sorry, councillor Warren, second by councillor Yeo, all in favor? I stand corrected, it was Dan that moved it, second by councillor Warren, all in favor? Thank you. Next on the agenda, 8.2, Amendment memorandum regarding the exemption to building bylaw fees for building permits to remove stormwater connections from the municipality sanitary sewer system. Councillor Perry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and I'll speak to this very briefly. I want to thank Amber Hader for her assistance in helping put this memorandum together. It's no news to anyone here that even before the large snow melt and drainage this season, when we had storm events that are getting more intense and more frequent due to climate change, there simply isn't capacity to absorb all that water by the existing wastewater treatment facility in Fenland Falls. I noticed last week the same occurred here at the Lindsay Treatment Centre. This occurrence is due to many factors, including infiltration and inflow into existing storm, into existing sewer pipes. Many residents, many homes in Fenland, for example, still have drainage from their storm drain going into the sewer. So when there are these large events, these large storms, there is this great deal of water heading towards the wastewater treatment plant. I can say that the wastewater treatment plant is at 65% to 70% or so at capacity. It isn't a capacity issue on a day-to-day basis, it's a surge, stormwater, and weather event issue. And in those, when that occurs, there's a difficult decisions to be made. One is to bypass the tertiary treatment, which is fine with Health Canada, UV-treated wastewater is put in the river, and it has been sufficiently treated at two stages not to be a large concern. With exceptional volume on occasion, the capacity is such that the existing framework cannot accommodate the amount of water, and it has to be directed into the Fenland River at the south of the locks to divert it away from the wastewater treatment plant, and that does result unfortunately in untreated wastewater sewage being put in the Fenland River. Yes, it dissipates, but I know that we'll all agree that this has to stop happening. Once is too many times, and so what, I was supposed to have a public information meeting this past, well, yesterday evening actually, but it was overtaken by events. Information on how local residents can take measures at this stage to disconnect their stormwater drain from the sewer system. What the motion before you is, is to be able to provide some incentives for that, to at least be able for now to waive any building permit fees that may be required, for example, if the weeping tiles and sump pump system are implicated and need to be changed. As you'll see in the memo, Manager Hader had provided that this would be a minimal cost in lost revenue to the city negligible, but still go potentially a long way to be able to assist and incentivize residents to take this action, and I commend this for your consideration. This is not a Ward 3 specific measure, the fees would be waived to residents across the city in all wards. Thank you.
Are you going to move that as printed?
Move it as printed.
And could I have a second? Mayor Elsley, and any discussion on that? Councillor Warren.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I totally support this. I was just wondering if there'll be an education portion to this for all areas, because it's something that could impact all wastewater treatment plants going forward, so I think there needs to be an educational part to this also going forward, but I'll support what's on the floor now.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Passed. And 0.9, imagine that, a motion to adjourn. Councillor Richardson and Mayor Elsley, all in favor? Thank you for everybody for coming today.